Library has been in the news lately. Planning and zoning commission has been put out there. But we are not hearing any application having to do with the library tonight. So just in case anybody's there here for that. Also, we will not open item number four tonight, which is forty nine North Wilton Road. We expect to open that at our next meeting on March thirtieth, two thousand twenty one. And I'd like to start with a roll call of the commission, John Goodwin, I'm here, Jane Griswaki.
Jane, you're muted.
Muted.
Jane?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. John Cris?
Present.
Dan Redman?
Present.
Claire D'Scornia?
Present.
Kent Turner?
Here.
Dick Ward?
Here.
Bill Williams?
Here.
Kristen Nielsen?
Here.
Arthur Cassavant?
Here.
Chris Herring?
Here.
James Beish?
Here.
Great. I would like to welcome, since we're on the subject of James Beish, I'd like to welcome James to the commission. This now foils out the full complement of the commission. James joins us as an alternate. And James, maybe if you can take one or two minutes and just tell us a little bit about yourself.
Sure. Thanks, John. So I grew up outside of Boston, small town called Wayland, Mass. I went to school undergrad in Connecticut. In terms of my professional career, I started off in investment banking. And transitioned to work at hedge funds as a research analyst and a money manager. Did that for around fifteen years. And during that time, I went back to school a couple of times, got an MBA and a master's in social work. And I started actually just transitioning to social work full time around five years ago. I also co-owned a business with my wife, my wife Jen. We have two kids, twins, boy and a girl that are nine years old that go to East School. We have two dogs. And my wife and I and one other partner co-owned a business where we work with kids with autism. We have a few offices in Connecticut, play around a hundred people in Connecticut, and we have a few offices outside of the state as well. So given that background, I have a steep learning curve. I have a lot to learn from from you all in the commission. But I'll work hard to try to get up that learning curve and be able to contribute to this team.
Great, James, and welcome again to the commission. It's great having you onboard. Next thing we have to do is we have to amend the agenda. So what I would like is if somebody can make a motion to add item number seven deliberation in any possible action on a closed public carrying item. And delete item number nine, update on legislative actions. Do I have a motion?
So.
Okay, I heard Mr. Cris, I heard Mrs. Griswaki second, I vote yes. Mrs. Griswaki?
Yes.
Mr. Cris?
Yes.
Mr. Redman?
Yes.
Mr. D'Scornia?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Ward?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Nielsen?
Yes.
Great, okay. We have full attendance at the regular meeting, so we will not be seating alternates tonight. So let's get going to the regular meeting with the public hearing. Item number one, ninety-two West Hills Road, upon application Louise Brooks, Brooks and Pilatico Authorized Agent for Mark and Jane Shane Holtz. Owners for a special permit, it's site plan approval of sections three seventy-one and A two B. To allow the maximum building coverage to be increased by under forty-six square feet to allow an addition of covered porch on the south side of the house. Maximum building height eighteen feet and or one and a half stories and a portion of the lot for property located in the two acre zone at ninety-two West Hills Road. Ms. Brooks?
Yes, good evening. The applicant, Mark and Jane Sean Holtz, seek to build an open covered porch on the back of their home over an existing blue stone terrace. It will not be visible from the street. And the proposed porch is four hundred ninety-six square feet. And we are asking your consideration of a hundred and forty-six square feet over the allowable. We will, as dictated, we will multiply that by two and indeed restrict three hundred and five square feet of area in the southeast wing of the home, as noted in our drawings. There will not be any finished or heated square feet in this addition. It is merely an open covered porch over a terrace. I welcome any questions.
Okay, questions for the applicant? Everybody good, straight forward? Okay, thank you, Ms. Brooks, this application is closed.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Item number two, four eighty-seven West Road, upon application Rob Frangione, Frangione Engineering Authorized Agent for Ashley Shackleton. Owners for a special permit of section six-four G one and six-four G two to allow soil disturbance of approximately twenty-seven thousand square feet. For the purpose of constructing a pool patio, pool pavilion, tennis court retaining walls and associated stormwater detention systems in sight regarding for regard regrading, sorry, for property located in the four acre zone at four eighty-seven West Road. Mr. Frangione, are you here?
Don't actually see him.
Anybody here representing four eighty-seven West Road? Okay, you don't see him, Lynn?
I don't see him actually, and no, I don't see him at all.
He's not on the list.
Okay, let's move on then. If he joins, let me know. Let's move on to item number three, thirteen eighty Ponus Ridge Road, upon application of Felipe and Mariana Memorial. Owners for a special permit, it's site plan approval of sections three-four C three-three-six A and A two to allow addition of a detached accessory residential structure for property located in the two acre zone at thirteen eighty Ponus Ridge Road. And Mr. Cris, I understand you're recusing yourself, correct?
That is correct, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Cris. Mr. Cassavant, you are seated for this application.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Who's here to present, please?
My name is Craig Bassam, I'm the designer of the project and I'll take you, oh, I'm here to present. So I'm presenting on behalf of Felipe and Mariana Memorial, and we're applying for a special permit for a detached accessory residential structure to add extra accommodation that will function as a pool house and as a guest house for a family and friends. And the property thirteen eighty Ponus Ridge is known as the Willis Mills House Two. And it's an important new Canaan modern from nineteen fifty-six. And it's listed on the National Register of Historic Places. And it's part, has been part of the Historical Society's Modern House Tour Program as well. And the original certified registration for that is attached in the application. And because of the purity of the historic and the historic importance of the existing design and its discrete displacement set into a rock ledge, and it's then also as close proximity to the minimum setbacks. The only way to add extra accommodation is to incorporate it into a new structure separate from the house. The only location suitable is the area by the existing pool. And the pool is located away from the house approximately twelve feet in higher elevation. And you basically walk up two complete levels from the living area of the existing house to reach that area. And this is obviously, this is why the pool house is important to be there, but it's the only option to add extra accommodation needed for additional guests, for guest rooms. And this existing pool was built in nineteen seventy-eight. It's located on the north end of the site. The house is down on the southern side. And so it's the flat area right by the pool. It's still very dramatic and rocky, but it's the one flat area that the site has that could accommodate a building. So the proposed building then sits between the pool and the street side Ponus Ridge. And it follows the orientation of the existing pool deck, which is, which we would rebuild with a long facade then facing the pool itself. And it sits within all the setbacks, the closest corner is forty-nine feet, five inches from the front from Ponus Ridge and fifty-eight feet, seven inches from the western side boundary, that's the closest boundary. So we're trying to maintain all of the rocky natural features of the site, it's a very beautiful site. So the building would then just float over the landscape on the slightly recessed concrete foundation walls that stop basically twenty-four feet short of the building on the north side where the land drops off. And then the building then just cantilevers out. So we're just trying to disturb as little of the side as we can. And we're actually, we only have to take down one tree in order to build the building. And there are wetlands on the site that cross the rear corner of the western edge. But they're approximately a hundred and sixteen feet away from the closest corner of the proposed building, and it's approximately sixty feet lower. And the design itself is a flat roof with just an eight-foot interior height in a long rectangular form in a proportion that's similar to the original house with glass walls and horizontal cuts. And it's sort of a simple aesthetics that complement the the original house. And the accommodation includes a screen porch to the south end, closest to the existing house, with a folding glass wall that opens into the living area and the kitchen and two bedrooms, guest rooms to the north side. And the materials besides the concrete walls are flush cedar vertical boards, similar to the existing house, but finished in a charcoal oil, so the building recedes into the natural landscape blending with the darker tree trunks. So it sort of presents itself as just a simple rectangular floating box just above the natural contours of the site in amongst the mature trees. Because the pool area is so separate from the main house, it requires its own septic system and well. And these have all been designed along with the drainage by Peak Engineering, and those plans are also uploaded. And the septic itself sits between the building and the street and also does not impact any existing trees as well. The allowable site coverage for a two-acre lot is is five thousand two hundred and twenty-seven square feet or six percent. The current building occupies thirty-eight hundred and fifty square feet. And with our addition, we would like to take that to fifty-eight hundred square feet, which would be five hundred and seventy-three square feet over the allowable, which would put us at six point seven percent coverage instead of six percent coverage. So we're asking for that approval based on the three point six A and the special provisions of the preservation of modern houses as well. So as I said, this is the only place we could actually build. And because of the elegance of the existing house, it makes it impossible to to build an addition directly onto the existing structure itself. So if there are any questions?
Questions for the applicant, please.
I've got a question, I'm looking at the, this is Dan Redman. I've got a question concerning the floor plan of the square footage of interior space. The overall structure is a little over ninety-one feet long by twenty-one feet wide. So it's about two thousand square feet. But from what I can see, you've got a, what looks like a screened porch with operable bifolding doors on one side of it. Which I would assume that would be open to weather, is that correct?
No, well, the screen porch is is all covered. So that folding wall then opens up that living space, becomes like an indoor-outdoor room. So the screen porch occupies about twenty-four feet of that length. So the the actual air condition space is around fourteen hundred and twenty square feet.
Right.
Would be the living room and the single, the bathroom and the two bedrooms.
Right, but the screen porch, the south or southwest elevation of the screen, which faces the deck, that would be open to weather, correct?
I'm sorry, yes, that's correct, that's correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Anybody else?
Yeah, hi, it's Kent Turner. I have a question about sightlines. Have you done a study to understand if the new addition will be seen by the neighbors? Particularly the, from the south? Do you have any screening, is the topography such that the new addition will not be seen?
Well, because the the actual site itself, it's actually towards the Ponus Ridge site. So the, it's it's sort of the furthest away, you won't be able to see it certainly from the south end at all from the, it's hard to even see from the existing building itself. Because where the pool is, it's on that sort of small area between Ponus Ridge and the pool. So it's set back from where the pool is actually out on sort of a precipice out there with a view across the valley. So the addition is set back from that. And even where it cantilevers towards one end, you're still up in the far corner closest, basically as far as we can get into that corner and still within the setbacks of the site on the Ponus Ridge site. So you know, anywhere near that edge where it drops away and you get the valley view to the other neighbors, we're set back as far as we can. So even the other neighbors on the north side, they're quite a long way down. And also the the site itself is very heavily wooded. And our intention is to, it's such a beautiful spot that with the clearing where the pool itself currently exists, that we're trying to, well, like I said, running, actually cutting down one tree where the structure itself is located. So we're slipping it between the existing trees and the sort of the forest, sort of mossy, covered, rocky, natural setting. So it really is as far away from the boundaries of any neighbors that we can get. It's more closer to the Ponus Ridge side is that it would be, it will be the most obvious viewpoint of the structure.
Okay, thank you. Next question I have is on lighting on the exterior of the new addition. Are you planning on increasing the existing lighting?
We just have, there are, there are basically three large trees that sit around the building. So one on the south end and two, one on the, on the southwest on the long elevation and one out on the north side, very close to the building. So the idea was to give, rather than putting, there's no flood lighting out for any of the decks or anything like that. So the idea was to put some uplighting for the, for those trees to add sort of a halo of light close to the building itself. So we wouldn't be adding any floodlights that light up large sections of the landscape. Also for the deck itself, right now, there's only just a very small light on to the step where you step up to the deck as more as a safety feature right now. So the idea is to keep it very subtle and and simple and highlight the landscape without overlighting anything. So it's more like a, an accent lighting around the house, just to give it a subtle glow essentially, because you're up there on the hill.
Great, and my final question is on the, your air conditioning units. And if you have an emergency generator, where would that equipment be located?
The the air conditioning right now, the, we're putting the air conditioning, again, towards the Ponus Ridge side. We've got an approximate position for the condensing units, but we're trying to hide those as much as we can. So the the main units are located within the building itself. And as is the pool equipment underneath where the, where the structure cantilevers, there's a, there's an open section. And it's slightly recessed in there, we're actually putting the pool equipment to hide that. So the idea is that this building will sit here very naturally in this, in this landscape and not be encumbered by equipment and things like that. So and the, there is no position for, we haven't put the position for a generator yet. We're talking about going forward, if we do, we will go forward with another application for the generator. That's not positioned right now, but certainly any of the equipment, you sort of has to be located towards the Ponus Ridge side. Anyway, just because of the access and again, like even with the septic, you know, to 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 not disturb the site so much and not destroy the trees and not destroy the beautiful rock ledges. The only place is that corner right up there near the Ponus Ridge side to put things in. So the intention, obviously, because it's sitting in a natural forest, is to hide this equipment as much as possible. But any equipment is as far away, certainly from any of the neighbors that it could possibly be.
Great, thank you.
This is Dan Redman again, I just have a follow-up question to one of Kent's questions. With that site plan, as you're showing the current footprint of the building, you're about the same, let's, same offset from Ponus Ridge as the main building is currently.
Right.
But the elevations are significantly different, meaning, as you can see on that topographic map, the the new structure is kind of sitting on top of that ledge precipice that's elevated and the the floor level of the new structure is probably a good, oh, I don't know, ten or fifteen feet higher than the existing structure's floor level. So it's, it's really like up on the mount. How's that going to present itself to the road, to the neighbors, lighting? I mean, the existing structure, the elegance of the existing structure is that it's kind of nestled into the ledge, into the mountain. And it's, it's, it's cascading down that ledge. It is sort of in a natural way here, we're positioning this, you're positioning this new structure up on top of the hill. Have you looked at those sightlines and how how this law looked from the road?
Yeah, that's, it's a very important thing, because the site right now, the site itself has two halves. One side is the ledge where the existing house is built and built into that ledge. And the other half of the site is this little hilltop. And then, well, actually, there's sort of three parts. Then the bottom section, which is about sixty feet lower, is is sort of the forest down the bottom. So the house, there's really only two positions you can build. The house occupies the one buildable site at the moment, which is the way it's set into that rock ledge. And the pool occupies the other part that you can actually build on, which is that little hilltop. But the beauty of that hilltop is because it's covered with the forest, and this is why it's so important not to disturb that. Because it's quite a little oasis up there. So and the the idea of the way the building is positioned is facing, obviously, to get the proper orientation. And it's facing towards the view of the pool itself and to react with the pool. But what that does is, what's nice about that is you get a long elevation that's canted off of Ponus Ridge. But it's not the, it's not the elevation which presents, that elevation has a long slim cut as windows. It's not sort of the main glass walls that look out onto, into the building itself. It's sort of more of the the private side of the building and presents a little bit of a wall, if you will, to Ponus Ridge itself. So the building looks very discreet from the road. You'll just see a long horizontal cut at night, let's say, if the lights are on. But there's no other features towards that. The other features are really towards the pool side where there's a big glass wall, obviously the screen deck on that end as well. But the screen deck, even the screen deck itself facing the Ponus Ridge side is also done the same way as that slot window. So it's just one very long, simple slot, you're not looking directly into the deck itself. And it's not fully exposed in any way towards the street side. So and the way the building is then nestled in amongst all the trees is a very difficult thing to cite, because there are so many trees nestled so close. It's also why the structure is only twenty-one feet wide, that's as, that's as wide as really you can go without. Even in that case, we've got to do some special protection for three trees, three trees that are close. You really couldn't even get any, any wider than that. So really, the only, the only form to sit in there, to sit between these trees on this little flat section up there is to do a long, simple building like this. So but but it's very important that it presents a very simple, minimal elevation to the street side. And again, that the trees are super important, that it's nestled in there, which will disguise a lot of, I think, a lot of the building as well. There's a very big mature trees and there's a lot of, the trees that are plotted right now are all trees that are over six inches in diameter. So there are lots of little sapling trees that fill in that area as well. So I think with the, it's such, by maintaining the natural wooded aspect of that site, I think that's really important. That we're not cutting big sections of that down, that that's the character of that site. I think that it's the only solution really. And it's also why it's important to keep the building is quite low, it's only an eight-foot interior building height. It's not a high building, it's a flat roof. So there's, it's as low, as low as you can possibly get, basically.
Gotcha. And on, on that north elevation facing the street, that ribbon of window that you have going across, going from left to right, it's facing the screen porch. Then it's the kitchen area, then one of the bedrooms or office. What does FG represent, is that frosted glass?
Fixed glass.
Fixed glass, got it. Okay, but it'll all be clear glass looking into the structure, correct?
Yes, that's all clear glass, because that's also one of the nice views of when you get inside the building, when you look through that slot, you'll see the trees through there. And so, yes, and then there'll be, there's obviously, there's some privacy shades that are built into the ceiling inside that can be used. That, but yes, it's clear fixed glass and just, and besides the two small operable ventilation for the bedroom and the, the living room area on that elevation.
Yep. Thank you.
Yeah, I have a quick question, why was it designed to exceed the allowable building coverage?
Well, I think that, you know, it is, it's a pool house and it's a guest house. So we have, to get the right accommodation that's needed, there are two bedrooms. We only have one bathroom for those two bedrooms. But because this is quite a long way from the the existing house, because the existing house, you, it's sort of an upside-down house. You enter on the the main level, which is flat, where you come off the street. And that's actually the, where the bedrooms are and the entrances. But then the living room, kitchen, dining room is actually on the floor below. So when you take the site and you're going below then to the living dining room, and then we're going up to the pool house, it's sort of the family room that the house doesn't have, essentially. So it's a family room that's oriented towards the pool, which is the the summer place. So to have, to build a building up there and to have the right sort of accommodation, you can see, like, even in the plan, we have a, a screen porch, which is essentially the dining area. So and then the inside is really then just a lounge area. So I don't even feel like the accommodation is overly excessive by that means as well. So but when you're building a separate building up there, obviously, you're a long way away, so you need to have a certain amount of accommodation. This is not, this is not an insignificant place to build and to get the right details and quality out of this construction. So I believe this is a comfortable size without being excessive. But it gives you the accommodation that you really need to get the most out of that area up there by the pool.
For the record, that was Mr. Ward for the question, anybody else?
John, Kent Turner again, I guess this is for Lynn, were there any letters for or against from the neighbors?
There were none.
Thank you.
And Mr. Bassam, I assume you reviewed this with the New Canaan Historical Society?
Not directly, I have not reviewed with them directly. I know them very well, because I worked on the original restoration of the house twenty years ago. So I've spoken with them without going through the plans personally, but they know the idea of what we're, what we're planning.
Okay, so they're aware of the project?
Right.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, would anybody from the public like to address this application, please? Lynn, let me, let me know once you've surveyed the wall.
I'd like to make a comment, my name's Tom DiCarlo, I'm the neighbor across the street at fourteen oh three Ponus.
Go ahead, sir.
Yeah, thanks, I'd just like to, I guess, commend the architectural team and my neighbor who I regret to have not have met at this point, but such is the world. We just moved in about four or five months ago, I think this is done very thoughtfully. I appreciate the sort of tip of the cap to not only their architectural integrity, but, you know, the, the efforts made to not disturb the, I think, the natural environment and also the privacy of the neighbors. I would say from, you know, my perspective as the probably closest neighbor across the street, you know, our sort of privacy would be our collective main concern, just making sure that, you know, both in terms of light and noise, that this doesn't really disturb our privacy and, you know, that the design reflects that as as much as possible. And then also, I think, just from a construction standpoint, you know, we're mindful of it. It seems a pretty large project and, you know, hopefully it doesn't disturb, you know, our living condition and that of our collective neighbors.
Okay, yeah, thank you, by the way, Tom, for your. Okay, uh yeah, uh thank you, by the way, Tom, for your your comments, I appreciate that. Um, but yes, there'll be every effort will be ma- will be made, uh, on the um septic plans, there's an area. For that will be set aside off um. Uh, for trucks and things and and obviously with the Amores li- living there, it's it's a little bit of the same thing where we're trying to be. Um, as careful as we can and not to make a big disturbance so that that they can live in the house. Uh, uh, without any disturbances and and obviously the same for you directly across the street. Um, but every effort we met, we have an excellent builder lined up, one of the best builders in town. Um, hopefully, if we can uh proceed, and so uh we should have a a very good professional team.
Okay, thank you, um, would anybody else from the public like to address this application?
If anyone wants to speak, could they either raise their hand or just speak up if you don't have your video on? I don't, I don't believe there's anyone, Mr. Chairman.
Right, thank you, Lynn, um, okay, so this application's closed. Uh, Mr. Frangione, I understand you've uh you've joined us, are you out there?
Yes, uh, sorry, I I thought this meeting started at seven thirty, I apologize, I thought I was gonna be right on time.
You've been attending New Canaan P N Z meetings, we haven't started a meeting at seven thirty in a really long time.
Yeah, I don't know.
He's he's getting us confused with Westport.
Well, that's the problem, when you work in so many different towns and they all start at different times, it's like, I don't know.
Yeah, but this is New Canaan, this is special, okay. Um, I'll have to reread this again, four eighty-seven West Road upon application, Rob Frangione, Frangione Engineering Authorized Agent. For Ashley Shackleton Owners for a special permit. Section six four G one, six four G two to allow soil disturbance approximately twenty-seven thousand square feet for the purpose of constructing a pool patio, pool pavilion, tennis court. Retaining walls and associated stormwater detention systems in sight regarding. I keep saying regarding, regrading for property located in the four acre zone at four eighty-seven West Road, Mr. Frangione.
A good evening for the record, Rob Frangione, representing Chris and Ashley Shackleton, uh, as you said, we're seeking a special permit. Um, for disturbance exceeding ten thousand square feet in area and a thousand cubic yards in volume. Uh, the owners proposing the pool patio, tennis court, pool pavilion, and four foot high retaining walls with associated grading and drainage. Uh, the proposed activities are occurring in an area that is an existing fill slope uh from when the house was built. The tennis court and pool complex will be lower in elevation than the house and will be roughly three feet below existing grade uh for the tennis court. So it's gonna be dropped down from view, uh doing so will result in a net cut on the property of about a hundred and nine cubic yards. Uh, the septic system reserve area has been approved by the health department. Uh, the pool pavilion, which is really just a safe shade structure, will have no facilities, so that has no uh impact on the septic system. Uh, the stormwater management system has been designed to treat the water quality volume for new impervious surfaces. As well as detain the increase from the twenty-five year storm. Uh, I've spoken with the town engineer and she has no issues with regards to the drainage design. An administrative application has been submitted to Inland Wetlands and it's pending Kathy Holland's review. Uh, we we anticipate her approval soon, uh, she's just been kind of tied up with the snow and being able to get out there to see the site. Uh, Stonebridge Associates has prepared a planting plan to screen the neighbors' view of the activities and to stabilize the disturbed soils. Uh, the project complies with both setback and coverage limits. And there's, that's really all there is to this, uh, so I'm I'm here to answer any questions, should you have them and hopefully ask for your approval.
Questions for the applicant, please.
John Chris, could you walk us through the planting plan?
Um, let's see, I'm gonna get out of, so. Basically, you know, everything is set down uh from the property and there's woods on the north side. I'm gonna try to pull up the planting plan on my screen, I think you guys have it up now. Um. So basically, what the uh landscape designer has done, he's put some uh, looks like hydrangeas and some other plantings. On the south side of the pool to screen that from the southern uh neighbor, so the neighbor doesn't have to look at the pool. And he's also prepared plantings around the retaining walls, uh, because there's gonna be a series of four foot high uh retaining walls. To um hold up the northeast side of the tennis court. And then he's proposed some other uh plantings on the north side of that to again further uh buffer that from the neighbors, even though. That side, in my opinion, isn't as critical, because again, it's woods back there, so. Um, you know, that's about the gist of the plan, it's mostly screening and and hiding the walls and and. Kind of buffering the, muting the uh the the scope of the walls.
Um, are these uh local native plants, are they exotics?
Uh, there, most of them are native, uh, from what he's told me. He's got the plant list on his planting plan of um. Uh, he's got the common names and the Latin name, uh, as far as the bay berries and the hemlocks, uh. Some dogwoods, lots of dogwoods. Okay, but is the, is the red wig dogwood native?
Uh, you know, the eastern dogwood is not, uh, koozie's.
Okay. Yeah, most of the stuff he tells me is native, so. Um. Again, it's in the middle of the property, the the um, uh, the pool is fifty feet plus away from the neighbor. The tennis court is smacked up in the middle of the property, uh, greater than fifty feet on the north side. Um, so it's it's a four acre lot, smacked up in the middle of it, so.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, um, would anybody from the public like to address this application? Lynn, let me know if uh you want want you to do your survey, please.
If anyone wants to speak, can you just raise your hand or speak if you're not showing your video? I don't believe we have anyone here to speak on the application.
Claire Tiscornia, it will there be any lighting, like for the tennis court?
No, there's no plans for lighting.
Thank you.
Lynn, question for you, are you um comfortable if we were to close this and address the application? Even though we do not have the administrative approval from uh Ms. Holland Wetlands yet?
Um. She, yeah, I mean, that. She hasn't had time to, she hasn't been able to go out to the site because it's covered with snow and she wants to do um. A uh, a review of the site, perhaps the best thing would probably be to keep it open till March, just and um.
Okay.
Hopefully, the next week or so would um give her the opportunity with uh melting snow and warmer temperatures and perhaps we can have an approval from her. In advance of the March meeting.
Okay, great, um. Anybody, Lynn, or sorry, commissioners, any other questions or anything for the applicant? Okay, um, this hearing has continued to the March thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one meeting.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Okay, moving on, item number five, eight forty-two Ponus Ridge Road. On application, Gregory Sages Authorized Agent for the National Trust for Historic Preservation Owners for a Special Permit Modification. Due to the COVID nineteen crisis, sections three two C sixteen. And A two B to allow modifications of conditions of existing special permit of the commission's January twenty-seventh, nineteen ninety-eight. Last modified in August twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty, authorizing use of eight forty-two Ponus Ridge as a limited public access museum. For property in the two acre zone at eight forty-two Ponus Ridge Road, Mr. Sages.
Excuse me, good evening, commissioners, and thank you for the opportunity to be heard. My name is Greg Sages, I'm the Executive Director of the Glass House at eight forty-two Ponus Ridge Road, a site of the National Trust for Historic Preservation. While much progress has been made in the effort against COVID nineteen, social distancing remains a necessary preventative measure against spread of the disease. As a result, as was the case for the entirety of last tour season, tonight, the Glass House requests. A temporary waiver of condition five C of our existing permit, requiring visitors to be bused from our downtown visitor center to the site. And we'd like that waiver for as long as the governor's guidelines for outdoor museums and zoos require such social distancing. Should the governor's guidelines relax this condition, the Glass House will be happy to revert to busing. Visitors from the site as that will give us increased traffic in our design store. Neighbors were notified of this application on February fourth, I've received no responses. Uh, or objections from the neighbors.
Okay, questions for the applicant, please?
What, do I understand that the the request is simply to continue with the. Current restrictions until the state of Connecticut guidelines allow you to resume use of the bus?
Yes, last year, I requested permission for ten cars to be allowed to park on the site. Because West School was available for uh parking, uh, this year, school is in school. Learning, so we're not able to use the West School parking lot during the week. So I'm requesting that we be allowed to have as many as sixteen cars parked on the site, none of which would be uh visible from our neighbors.
That was, uh, for the record, that was Mr. Ward, anybody else?
Yeah, Kent Turner.
Claire Tiscornia, um, so you are still using West School for parking during the weekends?
We would, we would plan to.
Okay, but not during the week, because.
No, and in fact, uh, the West School parking was really only necessary for our uh, for our team of workers that were on site. Uh, to park at.
Okay, thank you.
Kent Turner, um, do you have a uh a site plan or a diagram that indicates where the parking is to occur?
Uh, I don't have it um, uh, visible from uh, from this session, but I did present it the last year when I'm. Requesting permission and the uh parking would be entirely at the uh eastern side of the property. Which is a substantial drop off from Ponus Ridge, uh, with an elevated fence and uh. Stonewall that prevents visibility from the street.
But I guess my concerned question is on, you know, the environmental side of this, um. The existing cars or the cars that are gonna park there, um, is it graded already, is it, they're gonna park on grass, what, where are the?
Yeah, it's a combination, it's, I mean, it's already, the parking already exists and it would also be parking on um. The upper lawn, which was also used for handicap parking, uh, under more nor- normal circumstances.
So, we approved, how many spaces and how many additional spaces are you asking?
Ah, Lynn's guy.
This is, this is the uh, the what you guys approved in May, in May of twenty twenty.
So you see the red arrow, there's two uh entrance egress into the site from Ponus Ridge. And we'd have the cars come in from the northern mo- most entrance and the parking would be. Uh, along that uh red arrow, uh, if you're driving in that direction, it would be on the left-hand side. Uh, on the grassy area and then the uh area that bumps out to the west.
So is this ballet parking?
No, this is the uh visitors themselves parking, we have an attendant that uh facilitates the parking. Uh, tells them where where they need to park.
So again, I'm, you know, just concerned on the environmental side, um. How many additional cars will be parking on, say, grass surfaces or uh, uh, natural to park?
I would say three or four.
Okay, for a total, how many cars?
Total of sixteen.
Sixteen, okay. Okay, and no, no additional lighting or any uh signage, any, anything that's gonna change the character of that area?
No, um, you know, we'll be operating during daylight hours from ten AM to five PM in accordance with the permit. So no lighting is required and um, we will have a small sign at each um. At the entranceway indicating that that's where people are to turn into the property.
Okay, and if I understood correctly, um, this is a request for a temporary use. Uh, what what's the date that it expires?
Well, I mean, it's really tied to however long the governor's guidelines uh require social distancing. So I can't give a date certain by which it would expire, but. It's kind of uh impossible for us to operate uh and have social distancing and driving people from downtown in a bus.
Thank you.
Uh, Dick Ward, what happens to car number seventeen?
There is no car number seventeen, all tickets are sold in advance. And um, you know, we'll have somebody there for checking and car number seventeen gets turned away or. If they, if it's not number seventeen, but the place isn't sold out, then we would direct them back to the uh. Visitor Center where they could procure a ticket to to come to a visit on the site.
And would it be unreasonable or unfair to? Set some maximum time such as end of the year? So that if the state of Connecticut has not yet approved what you need. Then you'd have to come back to us and we would have to again extend it presumably.
Right, like we did the last year, it was temporary, uh, I did it initially for half the season and then. Uh, the commission extended it for the second half of the season when things hadn't improved. Uh, that would be fine to continue to do that kind of practice.
So are you have a di- a a date or a words that you would suggest?
Well, I I think I requested that it be uh, for as long as the governor's guidelines require social distancing. Uh, certainly, we can make it consistent with the end of the uh tour season, which is December fifteenth. Unless the governor's guidelines change before that date.
Mm-hmm, good, thank you.
So this last year, you're considered uh asking the uh daycare facility, which is just over the border in Stamford, which does have a parking lot of using their parking lot. Having people walk up that access road and.
Yeah, they are also in operation and um, so parking during the day, I think, I think uh. To have people walking, they would have to come up to Ponus and walk on Ponus and, you know, that presents some issues in it of itself. There's wet land along that driveway, it prevents us from having people walk across the uh. Across the yard from Camp Playland's parking lot.
Yeah, this is Claire Tiscornia, I think diverting parking to Camp Playland would be not a good idea, it's not safe. Those children open campus, they run around acres and acres of land, my kids went there. Um, like Greg said, you'd have to go all the way down the hill, park, get out of your car, walk all the way back up and then down Ponus. I mean, I think what we're looking at here is a few extra parking spaces and God forbid, this will be over within six months. You know, vaccines are coming on board, I don't think this is gonna be a really impactful situation, I think he's just asking for an extension. They need to keep working and keep it open, um, but again, like, I don't want it, I don't want parking at West School, I don't want parking at Camp Playland. If they're able to accommodate parking on onsite, I say we approve it.
Well, thank you, but and I just reemphasize that we prefer to have people come to our downtown visitor center. And, you know, complete their experience there, we have twenty-four uh video screens there that tell part of the story, which they're not getting to see. Um, under this scenario and also they don't get to, you know, shop in our design store, so. I know economics are not your concern, but they are ours.
Yeah, and they don't experience New Canaan either.
Right, that's right.
Okay, any other commissioners? Okay, thank you, uh, would anyone from the public like to address this application, please? Let me know, Lynn, once you've done your survey.
There anyone out there, I, I actually, I don't think so.
Okay, great.
Um, yep.
Okay, okay, this application's closed, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, item number six, three sixty-five Luke's Wood Road. On application of Edward O'Hanlon Authorized Agent for Grace Farms Foundation Owner for a Special Permit, Site Plan Approval Sections eight two A one. A dot I I, to amend its existing special permit granted in two thousand seventeen to allow the relocation of religious institution office to structure. At what was formerly known as eighty-two Puttin Hill Road and for staff parking and access conditions forty-one and fifty-nine. And to allow foundation to hold casual attendance, activities, events on site. With mission aligned for profit entities for foundation mission specific purposes, condition nineteen and to extend reporting required. Foundation activities from monthly to bi-annual obligation, condition ninety-two for property located in the four acre zone at three sixty-five Luke's Wood Road. Um, before I turn it over to Mr. O'Hanlon. I have two comments. I have two comments. The first one is, I acknowledge receipt of attorney Sutchen's emails and I state for the record her assertions are inaccurate and that I do not have any personal bias against the neighbors of Grace Farms Foundation nor, nor against Grace Farms Foundation. In fact, to the contrary of her assertions, I've now spent years trying to help achieve a positive coexistence between Grace Farms Foundation and its, and its neighbors. Therefore, I am not recusing myself from this matter. Second comment I'd like to make is what I would like the applicant and the neighbors to focus on. We want to focus this application on is to focus on and limit the discussion to the applicant's three requests for modification to the special permit. So for both the applicant and the public, I request they focus their comments accordingly. Mr. O'Handlon.
Thank you. Can you all hear me?
Good.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning and Zoning Commission. I'm Ted O'Handlon for Grace Farms Foundation. With me tonight is my colleague Diana Neves. We will address these three distinct ways in which we seek to amend the special permit with some comments from the following people. Julia Hughes will speak very briefly on behalf of Grace Community Church. Drew Milliken is our landscape, is our architect with regard to the, the structure at eighty-two, former eighty-two Putten Hill Road site. Tom Nelson from Accord Engineering is our civil engineer and Meg Walsh is a Grace Farms employee who will speak briefly and then I have some, some up comments. As you said, these are, these are three distinct, and we believe minor ways in which we are seeking to amend the, the special permit. The first relating to eighty-two Putten Hill Road, if I can ask Lynn to put up the first slide, just to orient you, the first slide, this is the the survey of topographic survey of the Grace Farms site.
Okay, give me, you can keep talking. Give me one second. I'm just.
Um, the, the Grace Farms site is a merge, three, three parcels were merged to make seventy, approximately seventy-seven acres. The smallest parcel was what was called eighty-two Putten Hill Road. It is in the middle of the site, along. You can see the cursor right there. This is the, where my cursor is, it's four point six acres in the middle of this. Around it are seventy-three acres is the rest of Grace Farms's site. Just to orient you, running north-south is Smith Ridge Road or Route one twenty-three. You can see the, the neighbors, the Marquitos neighbors are right here. It's approximately nine hundred feet away. The Bucklewitz neighbors are further down. You can see their parcel. It's right, is right here. I'm, yeah, right here. And then further down is the Curt Bissonette neighbors. So Grace Farms has been closed to the public since the pandemic hit the, the area in March of two thousand twenty, but it's been in service to the community all the same. While the public is not welcome there, Grace Farms through its international contact, contacts was able to help Connecticut obtain two million pieces of PPE for the treatment and, and through this year has served more than eighty, prepared more than eighty thousand meals or two hundred and two thousand pounds of food for Fairfield County nonprofit partners to distribute to vulnerable communities within the area. What this application seeks is essentially to relocate the, the offices of Grace Community Church from the East Barn to, there's a structure, a house in, in the middle of that four acre parcel at eighty-two, at eighty-two Putten Hill Road. This was damaged by fire at or about the time, I think just before Grace Farms purchased it and it has been unused since that time. There's a small shed behind it that Grace Farms proposed to, to repurpose as well so that it can be used. There's an existing driveway off Putten Hill Road that comes up behind it and behind that shed, you can see a fence there is a, an area where Grace Farms grounds personnel have stored equipment. So what we, what Grace Farms essentially proposes to do is to repurpose this, you know, this area, which has simply been lying fallow and wasting since then. The two thousand seventeen permit stated that there were, there was no use authorized for that structure and that any further use of it would have to be done by modification of the permit and, and that's what we propose to do. The modification we seek is simply to state that the use there can be of that, of that structure and the area around it can be in accordance with the other uses that are allowed on the premises. I will let Julia Hughes speak now, but I would can say that there's no, there's no increase in of staff or, or role or mission at all. This is just a, a convenient way to let Grace Community Church perform its pastoral role here on site. They will continue to still use the sanctuary and the rest of the, the facility, but by locating the offices there, Julia Hughes can probably explain to you better than I can. Could you turn the mic over to Julia, please, Lynn?
Yeah. I think she's actually unmuted.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Julia Hughes from Grace Community Church. We, the church continues to be grateful to Grace Farms for the gift of space at Grace Farms. We see this as simply a geographical move for our offices, one that will allow us as a church staff to have a bit more privacy as so much of what we do is pastoral meetings with individuals and one-on-one for counseling or family or smaller groups for a variety of care. So we are looking forward to this. We are comfortable working within the hours and maintaining all of the protocols that we have up until this point.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to ask Drew Milliken, who is the architect, to describe what the, you know, changes to the building are and Lynn, there are the Milliken building plans and there is a existing site layout and proposed site layout.
Hello, everyone. I hope you can hear me. So it's, it's mostly an internal conversion of the former house into several offices to accommodate fourteen staff and a few visitors now and then. The only exterior difference that would be noticeable would be the enclosure of an existing porch and so it's, it's really just a, mostly an interior alteration to the building.
Hello.
It's, it should be clear on the drawings that the only is the enclosure, that porch and there's, there's also a porch on the shed that would be enclosed. So it makes it more usable. It's simple.
Okay. You may have any questions for Mr. Milliken? I can turn it over to, to Mr. Nelson.
Hi, Tom Nelson, professional engineer with McCord Engineering. Our office prepared the septic system side development plan for the project. Lynn, is it possible to pull up our SE one sheet?
Is that the one you're looking for?
That's it indeed. Thank you. So the, the existing septic system that serves the existing residents will be abandoned. We're proposing a new septic system to the west there that'll serve both the, the new office space and there's a half bathroom proposed within that maintenance building. There's an existing well that's on the site just to the east of the existing house that will remain and continue to serve the building. We've proposed a total of twenty-three parking spaces strictly to serve the office and, and, you know, and the maintenance building there. Three of those parking spaces will be striped out of the existing asphalt driveway up near that house, one of which is a handicap accessible space along with a new ramp that leads up to the, up to the western entrance of the office building. The other twenty spaces are designed to the southeast of the existing garage. That parking area is designed to be relatively informal in nature, as natural looking as, as we could keep it. It's a gravel parking area. It will be constructed out of processed stone. There will not be any curbing. Obviously, no lights of any nature there. We did have to regrade some of that in order to get that down to sort of the five percent slopes that we look for in a parking lot. So in order to achieve that grading, we did propose two three-foot tall terrace retaining walls on the uphill side. The stormwater management for the property was, was designed per the New Canaan Town standards to control the peak runoff and improve water quality from the runoff. The parking lot will just sheet flow to the east towards the ponds across three hundred plus feet of established meadow and landscape. That, that landscape offer should certainly provide excellent filtration infiltration of that runoff. And in order to offset any increase that might take place from the runoff from the parking area, we've captured runoff from the office building and the maintenance building and the upper portion of the existing asphalt parking lot and brought those to an underground detention system designed to promote stormwater infiltration. I think that sums it up. If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them now or later.
It's Kent Turner. A question in the parking lot. Is that gravel? Is that going to be an impervious surface?
It's, it's a processed stone parking lot. It, in general, I consider that fairly impervious. We designed it as such. I mean, there will be more permeability than, say, if it was paved asphalt, but in general, I have not designed that to be permeable.
This is John Chris. How is the, how did you choose or how was the number of parking spaces chosen?
The, you know, we, we consulted with the team. I mean, it was, there's, I believe, fourteen staff members within the building. Ted might be able to answer this better than me, but essentially, you know, it's there for, for staff, for the building itself and, and any day, day-to-day visitors that they may have. It does, it does exceed slightly the minimum requirements for the office, but, but, but that's generally the idea. It was just for the staff of the offices.
Mr. Chris, the other reason being is that some, that they wanted to have a couple of extra parking places because Grace Farms has always stored equipment over there. If, if there's a vehicle that's being, that's being used, a golf cart or something to access it or to get over there, they need to bring more personnel. They have, they won't be taking spaces from the, from the church. And that's similarly the same reason why the, the shed was, was plumbed. Was again, Grace Farms has its, its grounds personnel are all over on the very south end of the site and then there's equipment up here. So the idea is to, as the, as it's, as its personnel move around the site, it's, it's convenient to have these facilities there.
Grace Farms is currently using that area for storage of equipment that's used to maintain the site. I assume people have to access it and are already parking vehicles in the area. So how many vehicles are typically parked there and where do they park now?
Well, the, the driveway was authorized for use for Grace Farms maintenance personnel only. That's the existing use. We've never counted them. I mean, it's, you know, if someone comes in the morning and they're going directly to a mower there, they may park on the driveway. There hasn't been existing parking there. The, the house has been empty. So there hasn't been any problem if, if a, you know, a personnel parks a private vehicle in the driveway, but that's going to change obviously if you've got, you know, eleven to fifteen is the typical church person, staff is parked there. So it just provides some order to it.
This is James, this is James Bash. What are the hours that this potential commercial office space will be open and how many days a week?
It's the, it would be the same as for the facility itself and those are set forth in the special permit. But it's open from nine to basically office hours and the, let me find the permit and I'll tell it to you. I don't want to misstate. The hours of operation are to ten P, ten AM to six PM. Okay, I'm sorry. Hold on a second. I'm looking for wrong section. Yeah, ten AM to six PM for normal. You can stay up until ten for special events, but there won't be any special events. These are office uses.
Okay.
So again, it's not intended to, to do anything but provide its office function and storage and then a place for pastoral counseling, which over in the East Barn, which is located next to the West Barn, that's where a lot of activity is and they found that to be something of an impediment to the privacy that some people like when they, when they seek counseling. So the, and Grace Farms has looked at this in terms of the screening. It's eight hundred feet, eight hundred and sixty feet from the opponents, from the property line to Bonus Ridge Road. At some point in the past, the use of this residential lot, there was a, a planting berm built along the eastern boundary. Lynn, could you put SE one back up?
Yes, give me one second. You can keep talking.
And there, there is a lot of mature planning and screening there. It's shown on the various maps that were provided, but Grace Farms is amenable to any sort of of additional planting that the commission may feel be necessary to protect the neighbors. But unfortunately, we began and filed this application in December when not the best time of year to see what the full effect of deciduous trees are, but you can see the
Whoops.
I got muted. I'm sorry. Right here along the eastern property line and, and that's planted and there's, there's considerable trees in the area. But like I said, Grace Farms is amenable to anything that any recommended that the commission feels would screen, would screen these either directly around the, the parking, the, or the storage area. But the storage area has a fence around it and will probably be locked to protect the equipment in it. But again, that's that sort of sums up the basis of that aspect of the application. The next part of the application deals with, if, if you all don't have any questions, I'll move to the next aspect of them.
I have a quick question. Dick Ward?
Yes, sir.
How much space is being vacated in the East Barn? And what will that space be used for in the future?
It will be used for Grace Farms. They haven't decided what to use it for, but it'll be available. There's meeting rooms there. It would be incorporated into the Grace Farms, just programmatic space that you could have conference rooms there. There, Grace Farms has no plans to either expand its number of programs or whatever. It's just, it's more space that's available for for its, its operations.
How much space? Do you know how the square footage of the area being vacated?
I think I referred that in the application materials, if you can give me a second. It's approximately twenty-one hundred square feet. This is, if you refer to attachment D to the application, these are just described. But approximately, there is a little bit more space in this structure than the twenty-one hundred square feet that the church presently occupies in the north end of the, of the East Barn. So if you look at the, I'm not sure if the Milliken haven't added up, I think the, the total square feet of the two stories of that structure is a little bit more than twenty-one hundred square feet is how I've described it. But it's twenty-one hundred square feet in the East Barn that will be vacated. But it's twenty one hundred square feet in the East Barn that will be vacated.
This is John Chris. I have an additional question on the proposed parking lot by May.
Yes, sir.
Uh. You're, you're gonna be putting in, because it's going to be dug into a hill a bit, leveled out, as you, at least the plan is to do that, there'll be a berm. Around the uh west side and a little bit on the south side. I'm wondering about snow removal and where you would plan to put the snow, particularly if the commission. Uh, decides to uh approve this and uh require some type of screening around the parking lot. Um, we wouldn't want the snow to smush all the plantings, and so I'm wondering how you plan to do that.
Um, yeah, I think the uh, the the screening generally is is going to take place on that berm that's a little farther to the. East, uh, you can see sort of dashed out and hatched in where we're extending it. Uh, so my anticipation is that the snow and I agree that the 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 wall will will make it a little bit trickier, but uh. In in trying to minimize the amount of of regrading, you know, what they'll have to do is sort of pull that snow back and and uh. And push it off to the east side, but the the on the east side, what we've tried to do there is keep that. Uh, kind of blend that into the natural grade, so uh that we'll just sort of push on to that existing lawn and and meadow that exists over there.
How high is the current firm?
That existing berm is about three to four feet tall.
And there are plantings on top of that and what's, how big are they?
Oof. I have to uh. Can't remember off the top of my head. Ted, do you have any sense of that?
I'm not sure. There's mostly shrubs and small trees. Yeah.
A couple feet, most likely.
Probably.
Fair statement. Okay. Take it easy. Thank you.
From uh. Just going back to Putt and Hill. Be the main entrance to Grace Farms as a, as the significant gate complex. You know, um accessing control to entry of cars and I looking at this Putt and Hill. Frontage, there's a a current iron gate and a cobble entry there. From the. From the street. Is that going to remain or is it going to be more traffic control coming in?
Um. I believe what Grace Farms would do would be take the gate off just so the staff could get there, but the 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 nothing is changing in terms of access to the premises. These parking spaces are cert- to serve that building. There is no further access to the site through that um, through that, although there's a. There's a path that will will parallel Putt and Hill Road up there, but um. It it hadn't intended to gate that because again, these are for for the church staff and for um members of the church who who um visit for counseling.
Just for the record, that was um Chris Herring that asked Mr. O'Hamlin the question.
Mr. O'Hamlin, it's John Chris again. I have a question on uh that uh Ingris again. You have a visitor to Grace Farms that visitor can't figure out exactly which entrance to go in, goes in this entrance. I'm wondering about signage you might have at the entrance saying. Don't enter here, enter there and where he might place it, size, et cetera.
That, that's a good suggestion. I think we probably should put, there probably could be put signage that says Grace Church only. And Grace Farm visitors with an arrow pointing further up the street to keep that from happening. We would certainly entertain that as a condition of any approval to make sure that that's, that that is the only, the intention is, this is not intended to make the the site more accessible to anyone.
I think that the applicant, assuming the commission decides to approve it, um would want uh commission input to ensure that it's a nice sign.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
The um. I'll move to the next um aspect of the application, which is. Addresses condition nineteen and thirty eight of the special permit. There is. This is what we call mission aligned corporate partner events. It's a lot of words, but they're very purposely selected. In order to demonstrate exactly what this intended to do. Grace Farms respects. The. History in the special permit where the commission declined to allow. And expressly um. Did not provide for what we called sustainability events in the two thousand sixteen application. These were defined as as small events that were intended to raise money from corporate entities to defray expenses. And the example we had used was like a partner retreat for or a corporate sales, small corporate sales. Um, opportunity to reflect and to uh plan the business of the entity who is um there. In other words, it's a. Um, the concern was, and we agree, that there's no, there's not going to be any renting of this site. Um, but the language of this of condition nineteen says that there will be no renting or use for outside commercial. Um, entities and the use is what we're focusing on here. Thank you, Lynn, for putting that up. Um, the um. There shall be no renting or use of any portion of the property, including any buildings or athletic field to outside commercial or for profit organizations. And and we are not seeking to change that aspect of the um. Of the special permit. What this addresses is something that's different. And before I get started further, I'd just like to introduce um to you a Grace Farms. Um, officer who you may be hearing from in the future. She's a New Canaan resident, Meg Walsh, and she's going to speak very briefly.
Thank you, Ted. Good evening, everyone. My name is Meg Walsh. As Ted said, I live here in New Canaan in an old house uh with my husband John and our four young children. Who also go to East School and uh one of them goes to the Nature Center where I have worked on annual events and served on the board a few years ago. As Ted said, I also recently joined the Grace Farms Foundation, and there my role is to assist with partnerships with nonprofits, individuals, businesses, and government. I first met the Grace Farms team in my prior role at a large law firm where I led the firm's corporate responsibility program, including its charitable foundation. Community service activities and pro bono legal service. Grace Farms was working on important community and justice issues, and my firm's lawyers and our corporate clients were as well. Today, in many ways, parts of firms and corporations act similarly to nonprofits. Businesses have corporate foundations and corporate social responsibility departments that have charitable goals, just like nonprofits. Building strong interdisciplinary partnerships across the public and private sector is important for all the nonprofits that serve our town, including the Grace Farms Foundation. And it is an important way to make our charitable work more accessible and beneficial to our local New Canaan community. Such as our New Canaan moms and dads and our next generation and our working professionals. For example. Working with architects, landscape designers, other designers, socially conscious brands and financial institutions. Provides value to our peers and neighbors here in New Canaan who have interests in those areas. I look forward to working hard on partnerships that are both beneficial to our town citizens. And respectful of the peaceful and historic nature of the Grace Farms location and our special community. I'll turn it back over to Ted.
Thank you. Um, the the genesis of this change is something that Grace Farms has encountered in the three years that it's been. Um, pursuing its its initiatives and particularly the social justice initiative. The um, the term corporate social responsibility is one that I think Meg just mentioned in that. Um, you hear a lot. These corporations want to not just pay lip service to social responsibility. But they want to be involved in it. And Grace Farms has run into this in the following concrete ways, and I'm, and I'm referring. As a discussion of this and it has uh sub paragraph B and and the uh D attachment D to the application. Um, the Grace Farms effort to combat social, I mean, combat human trafficking. Involves law enforcement and non training nonprofits and training law enforcement to recognize the the signs and things like that. Law enforcement personnel often refer. Entities where they have, where their work has brought them to Grace Farms for further training. When these are, when these entities are nonprofits, that's a perfect fit. Grace Farms has no problem with it. When these entities are corporations, the language of this. Section of the, this condition of special permit um. Means that Grace Farms can meet with them offsite or they can be. They can be observers or attend events. What happens though is, and and I can give you not just an example of law enforcement, but take a um. A clothing manufacturer, and there is one Grace Farms is working with now. It manufactures very popular clothing for young people and they import a lot of their goods, but what they want as part of their corporate social responsibility effort. Is to train their own pipeline. And that pipeline has nothing to do with the pipeline of other corporate events. And so what they've asked Grace Farms if to do is if they can, they can work with Grace Farms. To sponsor a training event where they bring the corporate entities. From whom they obtain their supplies or who manufactured parts for them. And so this is what is the genesis of this proposal, is that Grace Farms be allowed to do that. Because that, again, it furthers the mission, and we have proposed four specific. Conditions to this so that you can see that this is not renting the hall or being an event. Um. Uh, site. You, the the specific um requirements and built into this um, the language we're proposing is that this. This um for profit corporation must be working with Grace Farms. And the Grace Farms must be actively involved in training um or or whatever the purpose of the um of is, and that this. Event that's sponsored furthers the work of Grace Farms's initiative, not the corporations. So again, that's what distinguishes it from the, you know, the corporate sales retreat or something. And the further uh limitation is that this will be a small event at the very. Lowest end of the type of events that you all have allowed, so that again. It has to get factored as any event Grace Farms does with a non for nonprofit or otherwise. Um, with with Grace Farm, with the conditions of this special permit. That are governed by the number of people, the number of cars that come on the site. It, it'll be reported that way, but it um. It just, it's intended, Grace Farm, it's intended to help Grace Farms fulfill its mission to to do this. Otherwise, it would either be doing it offsite. Or it would be relying on other people to take Grace Farms's expertise and um and use it elsewhere. So. Um, that's, that's the basis for it. And again, we believe respectfully that the limitations we're offering give the. Planning is only commissioned comfort, that this is not going to morph into something different. Or it's not going to morph into something bigger or greater in scope and that it's, it'll be conducted just as any of the other. Uh, space grant functions that Grace Farms um uh carries on and reports in in a regular fashion. So, um. That's the second one, and that deals with the conditions nineteen and thirty eight, and we have proposed language for it that describes exactly that and the four. Conditions. If the, you know, we propose that the commission delete the sustainability events. But I don't see why the sustainability events couldn't be that, that can, same condition couldn't be um. Maintained while you're allowing these, because again, uh, that's not what these, these events are intended to be. The last one is um.
Mr. O'Hamlin, Mr. O'Hamlin, can I ask you a couple of questions, please?
Thank you.
Um. Um. This would not necessarily though be limited just to the justice initiative. I I think what I'm hearing is. It it could be any part of the the initiatives under Grace Farms. Is that, that correct?
That's correct. The the faith initiative is probably one where it might come up. Given, you know, um, but it just hasn't, it's been a counter, it's encountered, it's been encountered more in connection with the justice initiative.
And um. I think you're being very, there's, there's no payment for this, correct?
Well, him, that we have, we have worded this because um it. To just to leave that as a matter between Grace Farms and the entity. Again, the 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 gravelment, as I see it, of the prohibition for sustainability events, and I understand it. Is that you, is that um, there will not be the renting of the hall for, to raise money. But the fact is, is, you know, in this, in this world of, you know, corporate um. Responsibility, they, these corporations do have funds and they're willing to use them. And the, the idea is that, you know, if they're not willing to use them, and then it's still somebody that Grace Farms would work with. But if they have the ability to to pay, then um, wh- wh- why wouldn't they be able to? I mean, I can tell you one thing, you know, you look at these. Corporations like to demonstrate. Not just the word service to corporate social responsibility, but they like to demonstrate that they have budgeted for it and they have expended funds for it. So again, it makes it clear that whether there's a fee involved is not the purpose of the event. It 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 just may be that this is a corporation that feels strongly enough about it that they're willing to pay for it. So it just, it just makes that a, a, you know, a um, a, oh, by the way issue and not a. Um, not anything that's driving either the purpose of the event or the um. Or or why Grace Farms is is offering it. So by making it clear that this is an entity that's working with Grace Farms, and this is furthering both its mission and Grace Farms is um. Uh, so that's, that's what, you know, in all candor, that's, that's why we worded it that way. Sometimes there are funds available and the answer is why not? But again, it's not for the purpose of of raising money, which is what clearly the sustainability. Um, event that we described and that you all de- declined to allow in the two thousand sixteen applications.
Okay, and then, and then you mentioned uh on the the grid, so to speak, it would come under a small event, but can you, what what part of the grid would that be?
That would be in the, let me grab my permit. It would be the very bottom, under one hundred people, I think, is the section sixteen is the uh. Uh, casual attendance. It's actually up to two hundred is the, is the limit. It's number five.
So up to two hundred.
Yeah. But again, you know, in the experience of what, how Grace Farms is social justice, these are, these events are small. You know, and again, it's intended to bring, again, focusing specifically on the, you know, the the um. The material chain for a clothing manufacturer. You're talking only about a few, you know, few people.
What? I'm sorry, a few what?
You're only talking about a few entities. Or or it could be, but it began, if the idea would be to keep, keep it under at that, at that level.
Okay. Just, just um, since we're, we, we've gone into Q and A by ask, um commissioners, any, any questions?
Yeah, Mr. O'Hamlin, forgive me. Uh, at the end, you said there are four conditions to this. And I got the, the for profit must be working with uh Grace Farms. The event must benefit Grace Farms. The event will be small, like you just said, under two hundred people, and then I didn't get the fourth.
Here they are. The corporate entity is at the time working with Grace Farms. So in other words, this keeps, somebody is not going to call up and say.
I got that first one.
Yeah, the second, the second one is that Grace Farms and its staff are actively participate in the event. We're not renting the hall out. You want to, you know, if this, if this event is intended to train your corporate staff, we're part of the training team.
Okay, I got that one. Thank you.
Third one is that the event is one that furthers the work of the core initiative of Grace Farms.
Okay, got it.
Again, this is not the time for the training, you know, for the um, the sales team to noodle what their future is. This is, this is something that is part of Grace Farms's social justice or faith initiative. And then.
Conditions, couldn't Grace Farms have a corporation come in, you know, with their social justice department? Have two hundred people come in to talk about social justice and that, that would be okay. Uh, that's what you're asking us to, okay?
Will be.
Where they would work with GE's corporate social justice department to come in and discuss social justice.
That's great.
Be no okay event?
As long as GE is working with Grace Farms at the time. On the, on this, on these issues, that Grace Farms and its staff are part of the training function there. And that this is, this is, you know, the GE's corporate, what corporate responsibility or uh. Um, efforts are consistent with, you know, our further Grace Farms is, like if it's human trafficking. There's something not related to anything Grace Farms is doing, it wouldn't qualify.
Great, thank you.
Mr. O'Hamlin, this is John Chris. I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Uh, again, I'm looking at uh condition nineteen, which uh Grace Farms proposing be changed. But just to, I'm trying to come up with a, for instance, so let's say I work for amalgamated bag manufacturers and we make. Reusable grocery bags and we want to ensure that these are sourced ethically. reusable grocery bags and we want to ensure that these are sourced ethically and they're not using, uh, slave labor or forced labor or child labor, which is consistent with your, with, with Grace Farms, uh, initiatives. And we're looking to, for help and to ensure that this is the case in our various, uh, vendors and suppliers. So, uh, we're working with you, uh, amalgamated bag. Uh, so that's checks box, checks the box for number one. Uh, and then, uh, GFF and its staff are actively participating events. Let's say this is a three day training event for two hundred of our staff. And, um, a Grace Farm person is speaking for an hour. So we have a Grace Farm staff actively participating in the event, admittedly one person, one hour, but they're doing that. It's furthering the work of your core initiative, checks that box. Uh, and it falls under casual attendance because it's two hundred or fewer people, let's say two hundred. Um, so that would be allowed under what you are proposing for Grace Farms. Is that correct, sir?
I think that would meet it correct. Now the two hundred people and there, you know, would have to be, that, that's a, that's a big event for a casual event, but that would, their presence on the campus would, would impact the, how much of the campus is usable for other purposes and by other, by the public because of the presence of their vehicles and all. So yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I see your, your, your point being that if it was only for an hour, that's a way, that's, that's a minimal way, but I think, I don't know how else to say that actively participate is, you know, I, I don't know how to define that other than to define, to rely on the good faith of, 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 of the, um, the permit holder. Like, you know, I'd like to think that, I'd like to think that Grace Farms would be more involved than just one hour, but because of the nature of what it does, but, but I do think that, you know, uh, you know, a, a one hour lecture, you can't say, that could be the, that could be the, you know, the, the premier part of it. If it's a prosecutor who just handled a specific case that was land, you know, a landmark issue, I, I'm just, you know, I'm not trying to, to, to minimize your question, but, you know, I, I also, um, you know, I, I think the, these conditions rely on good faith and, and, and the faith that Grace Farms will com- comply with them.
Yeah, what I'm getting on this, sir, and, and you, you highlight this is how to not have such, uh, be a stealth facility rental.
I just, you know, I don't know if, you know, I just, um, I, I don't know what to say about that, you know? Again, you, Grace Farms has a mission, it performs its mission, it's, it's enthusiastic and earnest about its mission. I, I don't know what to say about a, a stealth, you know? I, I don't know what purpose that would serve or why it would, why would benefit Grace Farms.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah.
This is Dan Radman. Um, with these proposed additional events that are, uh, that qualify under these revised conditions, you would still be uh, working under the limitations of the, uh, original special permit approval, which had limitations on size of gatherings and frequency of gatherings by month and by year, correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Ken Turner. The, um, the staff is going to relocate, uh, from the East Barn, um, that empty space, uh, what, what is going to be planned for that? Would that be a space that the for-profits could, uh, utilize and, uh, rent out?
No, it could be, it could be space that might be used for, uh, for, for lecture rooms or an event room, but it would not be, you know, the, again, the idea is not to rent out this to for-profits. Again, it would, it, it might create, Grace Farms hasn't decided what to repurpose that to. It, it might become another space available for, um, for a lecture type event or a discussion type event. But twenty-one hundred square feet is what the, what the amount is. I just, it hasn't been decided, but to your question, it wouldn't be rented out to a, to a for-profit company. That, the, that side, that is not what is being proposed.
Yeah, Dick Ward.
Sir.
What prevents you from now training for-profit corporate employees on social justice or whatever other core initiative you, you have, or I don't see that that would be prohibited today.
Well, it's, it wouldn't be prohibitive in the sense that they could attend an event that wasn't specific to their company. But again, one of the things about corporate social responsibility is you want, you want to encourage, you know, the, the idea is that these companies want to address their own situations and, you know, a public of, an open to the public is often something that doesn't encourage that type of, you know, the type of candor and discussion that you might otherwise have if you bring your, your supply chain involved.
But if it's not turned into renting space or a commercial activity, I'm not sure I see that it would violate the current conditions.
Well, the current conditions, you go back to the, to the language of the, um, of the condition where it says use or the PCCs finally remain unchanged, that there shall be no renting or you, we're not dealing with renting, no use of any portion of the property, including any building or athletic field to outside commercial or for-profit organizations. So again, the, these for-profit employees or officers, they could probably be there as a guest, just having seen the, you know, the notice of it and are interested. But in terms of making that event specific to that for-profit, um, organization's supply chain or, um, you know, and affiliates, um, is not allowed there. That's what we're trying to change.
To your point, Dick, I, I'm still not clear on this. I mean, what prevents you from currently hosting an event for that type of outside organization? Because even under these new conditions, Grace Farms Foundation staff are actively participating in the event. So you would currently, you're allowed to do that. You would be the host of the event. And if someone's attending that event, that corporate entity, you're not necessarily charging them for that event, but they could make a donation to Grace Farms Foundation currently.
They, they could, but again, the, you know, again, using Mr. Um, Chris's example, the amalgamated bag company can't sponsor with Grace Farms an event that's intended for, to bring all of the suppliers, whether it's the, the paper, glue and whatever else goes into amalgamated bags into Grace Farms for a candid discussion of, you know, the business that they're doing and the concerns that amalgamated bag has. They could, they might all be able to participate. You know, as, you know, if they see a notice of a Grace Farms, you know, um, working with the U S Attorney's Office to discuss the latest, um, you know, uh, human trafficking event that was busted or something, but they wouldn't be able to make it specific to their situation. And, and I think that's a, that's being seen as a valuable thing. The corporations want to do more than give lip service to these, these things. They want to express their, uh, their corporate, their social responsibility.
Uh, Chris Herring here. So just a question on that point. So what you're saying here is that in order for them to express their corporate responsibility, they'd need to sponsor an event, which, which in my mind sounds like a, a commercial event.
Well, I mean, it, because there's a commercial entity involved, I don't want to, you know, mince words with you or, you know, avoid it. It, it would become a form of commercial event. But again, by, by limiting, limiting it in the way that these conditions are articulated, it's intended to, I think, allow great, recognize that Grace Farms can work with these entities as part of its mission without running afoul of the concern that, that you all had, and we understand is that we're not renting out, this is not a, you know, a, um, you know, um, an event facility or a, you know, or rental hall. So I, you know, but, but you're right. If, if, if you all do see fit to allow this, then that type of event working where Grace Farms and amalgamated bag are, are working together to present this to amalgamated bags, supply chain, i- it is a form of commercial event. You know, hemmed in by controls to make sure that, you know, again, it's consistent with the charitable use that Grace Farms is, is seeking to exercise.
Mr. O'Hanlon, it's Claire Tescornia. Correct me if I'm wrong. Grace Farms Foundation is currently working with pro, uh, for-profit organizations and businesses as we speak, right?
Correct.
So, so what was the crux of you bringing, wanting to change this condition?
Well, because again, if that, you know, I'm beginning, imagine that, if that corporate, that, that for-profit corporation wants to sponsor an event with Grace Farms to train its, its, you know, supply chain, it would have to do it offsite.
Right. And, and given the pressure we've been getting from the neighbors, maybe we don't want to have events at Grace Farms that hosts two hundred people. You see my point?
I do. And, and that's why we, you know, again, this is why we're asking to modify it. But again, we do, we do not think that, that by modifying it in that way, you're going to be adding to the, to, you're, you're going to be intensifying or changing the pace of activities at Grace Farms. This just becomes another event there. Not another added event there. They'd still have to factor it in, subject to the same controls over types of events and number of cars and that, that, that they exist under.
Not to be cynical, just to follow up, but wouldn't it be in Grace Farms' benefit to have more of these corporate events and they could charge to have these events at the site?
Well, it could be. It could be, but it's not, you know, that's not a, that's not a, um, you know, it, um, that's not a purpose of it. And again, I think by requiring these, imposing these requirements, you make sure that Grace Farms is not incented. Th- this is not a, a money raising effort in the way that, that sustainability events, again, proposed as they were as discreet, it was just found to be not consistent with what you all saw, the, the vision for the site. The, by, by imposing these conditions on it, it makes sure that working with this for-profit entity is going to be consistent with the, um, with the purpose.
Thank you.
How many of these types of events do you foresee monthly or yearly?
I don't have any idea. I mean, we don't have a list of companies that we intend to, it's just, it's been a number of opportunities we've either had to turn down or range offsite. And it was just, you know, thought that it would be, um, easier and make it more meaningful to be able to do it on site.
Uh, Lynn, you wouldn't happen to have handy the original special permit approval, uh, that had the matrix in there of the size and frequency, uh, of events? Do you?
I do. I have it in front of me. I don't have, um, hold on one second, because I can pull it up on their, on what they submitted for documents. So keep talking and, um, give me a second to just pull it up on the screen.
Yeah, I think, yeah, my, my point being, and Mr. Hamlin, you touched on it, is what we're, we're discussing is purely a, a reclassification of the event that is happening. It's not an intensification of the number or size of events that are happening.
That's correct. And, and again, they go, the, the, the the guards that are in the special permit against too intensive use of the site or the number of cars and, and the, um, that, and, and so I think that this would just factor in with the other, the other activities on site and it would not result in a, um, in an increase or a, or a change in the, um, it would be a reclassification. I think I like your term.
Uh, this is Dick Ward again. You use the term defined core initiatives. Where, where are they defined and what prevents you from redefining and creating new core initiatives at any moment?
The core initiative are defined in the, um, in the special permit. Nature, faith, community, social justice and the arts.
Okay. So they cannot be added to without a change of the special permit?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what I was worried about. So you're looking to modify the description of the casual attendance, which uh, is not limited in terms of the number of events.
No, it's not. And, but it is limited by the number of cars and that are on site. And so if two hundred people show up in two hundred cars, Grace Farms has a hundred and twenty-six, I mean, has twenty-six more people that they can allow on the site then. So I mean, you know, that's, that, I think one of the beauties of this is it's you all, the front gate monitors that by the number of cars on site.
Right.
But, but less than that, there's more, you know, it allows for more, a little bit more, um, flexibility, but a two hundred, two hundred car person event is a, you know, while that's the lowest number and there aren't any, you know, that, that's a, um, two hundred people is a
So, so James, so, but that done, that does potentially lend itself to an intensification of the activity. If it's not, if there's no parameter limiting the number of activities for casual attendance, presumably there could be scenarios where activity could be increased markedly.
I'm not sure I follow you. I mean, again, you're, you're
It says on the, under a number of days for casual attendance, not limited. If this becomes one of the core focuses of, of Grace Farms Foundation, it would lead to an intensification of activity.
Right. But if you look elsewhere in the special permit, you see that the activity on site is limited by the number of cars that are there. So again, if they had five of these events in a week, on each of those days, the number of people that can come to the site over and above the, the people that, that are in the cars that are there for this event are going to be cut back by the cars and people at this event. So again, that, that's not, the number of events is not, he, in, in this chart is not what the, the controlling factor is. It's the, it's the automobiles and the, as the activity on the site. So a lot, few people, a lot fewer people would be able to, to visit the site, to walk in the trails and all.
Well, can I ask, uh, this is Chris Herring. So what is the, because I think what, what I'm struggling with, and maybe I'm not alone here, is that I think your logic that you're proposing there is on an average day, there are more than two hundred cars at any given day. So in essence, by having an event with two hundred people or two hundred cars, I'm not sure whether we're using those as a similar proxy to each other, but let's just say two hundred cars. So each day, three sixty-five, we expect Grace Farms to have two hundred cars a lot. So if we have a lot, if we have an event, if, if my connection's bad, I'll, I'll defer to others.
I can hear you.
Um, I guess my question is, my, my logic there was it seemed like you, you're saying that if you're not having an event, you're already going to have two, two hundred cars in the parking lot. And, and I, I feel like there's a flaw in that logic in that if you have nothing going on at Grace Farms for a full week, my assumption is that they're not two hundred cars every day.
No, but that's the amount, that's the, that's the maximum amount that, that has been determined by the, under the special permit, the, after which we have to stop letting people in. So if you have two, and you know, if you, I would submit, if you have people at an event for two hundred, you have two hundred people at an event where they're all inside, you're going to have less activity on that site because you're only going to allow twenty-six cars in to walk around the site or do whatever, you know, the other things that you can do on the site. Um, but that's how this is, is controlled. There's, so there's not the, there, there's not a a limit on the number of casual attendance events you can have, but it's a recognition that, that those events do cut into what other activities can be taken place on site. The, the control under the special permit is not, is not determined by the number of casual attendance events. It's determined by the number of cars on site. Now, when you get to bigger events, when you get to bigger events than two hundred, then you get into, you know, you get into much more significant activity and then the site's closed and you only have a certain number of those type of events. But the idea is that with the parking available can sustain up to two hundred people without w- without interfering with, you know, without a problem, because that's going to be self-controlling because of the number of cars that'll be, yeah. I apologize. I know you weren't involved with the initial part of it, but, um, it's hard with document in front of you to, to walk you through, you know, what this is. But the idea was that, you know, casual events up to a maximum of two hundred could be accommodated on the site with, within the, the normal safeguards that the, uh, vehicle, the, the maximum number of vehicles and the, um, coming through the gate, um, controls.
I, I guess I'm not arguing about the, the safeguard. I'm just arguing against the, the difference of intensity. And your argument was that having an event is no different than not having an event and that, and I just don't follow that logic because I would think that an event would draw more than, more to the capacity than not having an event. And so I was just trying to understand that logic.
Yeah. I mean, I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to assert that point completely. I, I, if I did, I apologize, but it's just the, the idea is that in the experience of Grace Farms has been that these the, the idea is that, in the experience of Grace Farms, has been that these types of events are, don't ever come up to that event, but that amount, but they do, that, that is the, the definition. But, you know, again, you can, you know, we report these, and at the end of the year, in the summary events, if it looks like this is being, um, there's, there's too many of these, or for some reason, or the, I, I don't know, then you would have the ability to dial it back, but, um.
Hi, it's John Chris again. Um, just thinking about this, uh, some of the discussions, to me, seems to be regarding, you know, how often these events might occur, and, uh, what that might mean for traffic, whether it's individual, personal cars, or a bus comes, drops people off and goes back somewhere offsite. But, you know, if, if I am Grace Farms, and I'm looking to generate revenue, to cover my overhead, and to generate revenue for other, for various good works, you know, I tried to develop a franchise and a brand, so that, uh, for-profit corporations that are looking to receive training and, uh, uh, benefit from some of the skills that, uh, I would assume Grace Farms is trying to develop and has developed, that you had this brand, and therefore you have a series of training sessions that people keep coming back to and back to and, and, and attending. And so, uh, you, in effect, have a, a packaged training product that many people in the governmental area and/or for-profit corporation area may be interested in, uh, in doing. And so this could end up being more than just a, uh, now and again sort of event, uh, a series of events, but a fairly constant stream of events as people are taking advantage of the, uh, Grace Farms brand, uh, and it's a way to generate revenue. So I'm, well, you know.
Yeah, Mr. Chris, I, I hear you, but I think that, you know, I would hope that the commission would not make this determination upon a suspicion that somebody has an agenda here. I mean, Grace Farms is coming in good faith and asking for this relief. You can see from everything else that it does, that its, its focus is, is, is much broader than that. But I would, you know, to your point, I would tell you, you would, you would find that out fairly quickly. But one, one, there are limitations on what it can do, how much money it can earn under the tax laws as a non, as a, you know, a five oh one C three, but I'm not even talking about that. I'm talking about in its, in its annual report, you could see the types of events it held. And you would be able to determine whether there had been a, you know, there was a branding here and a specific focus and, and all that. And between the two of them, you know, I would say that, um, you would be able to find it out within a year. And then, you know, as any special permit use, you know, is not permanent, you could take steps to, uh, to address it. Uh, you know, Grace Farms is just standing in front of you, saying that, that's, that's not what this is about, and we hope that your, uh, your determination won't be in the suspicion, but, but, you know, take it at its word.
Thank you, sir.
The, um, the last condition that we're asking to, um, to address is the, uh, condition ninety-two, which is the reporting regime. Um, as it stands, we, Grace Farms reports once a month with, uh, very detailed information set forth in the five, subparagras, you know, categories under ninety-two. Um, we, we don't propose to change the types of information that's provided. Grace Farms welcomes the transparency and, and candor that this reporting requirement, but we're asking that, can it be done every six months? Rather than every month. And, um, I defer to any comments that staff may have. It's just, it's a, it's a, it's a paper exercise. It's, it takes some time. We're willing to do it because it's a requirement. But if you all saw fit to, and, and we're retaining the the final condition, which is at the discretion of planning and zoning, and this may be modified or terminated, you know, if you decide that you need more information more often, you could, you have every every right to go back to it. But for three years now, Grace Farms has without fail submitted its monthly report, and then its annual report. And, um, we're just asking for some relief in that regard. Again, not changing the content, but just changing the frequency.
And Mr. O'Hanlon, it's John Chris again. Uh, I must note, there have been some errors in your, uh, well, verbiage here. You talk about on a biannual basis. That means every two years? I think you mean semi-annual basis?
Well, I think, you know, we had this argument before I submitted this. I think biannual is twice a year. Biennial is every two years. B I E N N I A L. But our intent is every, is every six months.
Okay. Uh, and the next one is, uh, scheduled events.
You're correct. I'll defer to you. I apologize.
Semi-annual is unambiguous, let me put it that way.
Okay.
I like unambiguous language. Uh, but the second point, uh, point A, um, the scheduled events, uh, and size of events for the next month. So that means what's submitted in June is only for July.
Right.
So I, is that what you mean?
Well, it's, we, we submit the information that we have. There is a process where information, you know, it can come, but you're right, that would make that plan, I, you know, that, that would make that information less valuable, because it wouldn't, we, it wouldn't be the six months out would not be as fleshed out as it would be each month. But, but again, I just, um, you know, you're going to pick up those events on the back end. You know, once they, once they happen, they get reported. So it's just the idea is that, um, I, I just didn't want to be perceived as reaching in and changing the content of what you're looking for. But if, if this, I, I'm not sure that that staff will, you know, sees that as a very valuable, um, concept. If they do, you know, I'll stand corrected, but our idea is to, you know, and it's just to make this less of a, of a, of a paper dump on the, on the planning and zoning department once a month, that it's not, not as meaningful as it might be if it was six months of, um, of information.
So Attorney O'Hanlon, this is Art Cassavant. I, I have, um, a very practical question, which is, you're still going to need to collect, aggregate, and report all of the data.
That's correct.
I don't believe there will be any change in the work, except the filing process. Two aspects of that. Number one, um, why wouldn't it, for example, be quarterly as opposed to twice per year? Uh, we'll, we'll ignore biannual, biannual or semi-annual or whatever. Um, because the data collection would still need to be done. There wouldn't be any change in it. And in fact, I presume it would be easier for staff to have a regular reporting regimen. And number two, ha- has there been any evidence that these reports have in fact uh, proved to be a, a difficulty to collect or, or administer from the perspective of GFF?
No, it's just a, it's, it's just an exercise. I mean, GFF has trained its, its staff, and it does it. Quarterly would be, would be more relief. Would be less relief than, than semi-annually, but, um, if that's what the commission saw fit, that would provide some relief. But it's just, you know, that's the, that was the number, that was the number we were, we were asking for. If the commission sees fit to make it quarterly, that would be, that would provide, that would provide some relief as well. Okay. Mr. Chairman, that is the, um, those are the three changes that we're seeking. Um, and, um, I know that there are some, um, neighbors and their representatives that want to be heard. I just would ask the chairman if we could, uh, reserve the right afterwards to respond. I haven't had a chance to read their materials. Uh, you know, I would urge the commission to he, you know, to adhere to your admonishment at the beginning. I think there, there's an agenda here to bring this to another forum, given the, the level of it, but I, you know, I leave that to you and your counsel. But I think that, you know, Grace Farms has a good record of, of cooper- cooperation with its neighbors who want to cooperate. It has a good record of cooperating with the town. It has a record of responsiveness and responsibility. These, these, um, these are minor changes relative to the overall activities on the site. And we'd ask that, um, that the commission look favorably on them.
Did I interrupt you, Mr. Hanlon?
No, I'm finished. Thank you very much.
Okay. Um, yes, as the applicant, you have the, uh, the right to, uh, reply for, to any, uh, additional input from the public. So let's open it up to the public. Who from the public would like to address this application, please?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Sherwood.
Yes, may I, uh, address the commission?
Please do.
Thank you. Why, um, I'm an attorney. I represent Mr. Kurt and, uh, Ms. Bissonette, who own a residence at twelve eighteen Smith Ridge Road, which directly abuts Grace Farms. And they have, uh, seen the transformation of the Grace Farms property from, um, farmland, uh, through, uh, a community church property, uh, into a uh, regional, maybe national resource and media center with, uh, facilities for the arts, culture, science, education, social justice. Uh, there's a performance center, uh, church, the religious sanctuary, community center with meeting rooms, gardens, a gymnasium, uh, walking trails, uh, outdoor recreational fields. So it, in their experience with Grace Farms, uh, what started out as a relatively modest proposal has mushroomed into a much larger facility, uh, which has significant impact on their property and, and, uh, the property of their neighbors. And I respect your admonishment, Mr. Chairman, uh, that we stick to the proposed amendments, but um, the history of this application demonstrates that, uh, Grace Farms doesn't always mean what they say. And they have a history of getting their foot in the door and expanding on the permissions that the commission gives them. Our concern is that these, uh, proposed amendments will unleash another quantum leap of activity at the property and further increase the impact on the residential properties in the neighborhood. The repurposing of, uh, eighty-two foot and hill road in, by itself is of no concern, but of course, um, there, there's the concomitant, uh, effect that it's going to free up space in the East Barn, and that space will be used for uh, increased activity with the public and all that attends there. Um, we believe that making Grace Farms available for for-profit use is totally inappropriate in a, uh, residential four-acre zone. There's no similar commercial activity permitted in the res- residential zone in town. All of the uses are either residential or institutional or charitable, uh, and that includes the accessory uses. There, there's just no room for commercial activity in a residential zone. Uh, so we think that it's prohibited by the zoning regulations, and it certainly is prohibited by the, uh, terms and conditions of the twenty seventeen special permit. And Mr. O'Hanlon asked, well, why not allow this? Well, the answer is you shouldn't allow it, because it's going to increase the impact on the neighbors who have to live with the Grace Farms operation. How would you monitor, uh, if, if you adopt the, uh, proposed amendment to condition number nineteen, how would you monitor those events realistically? In other words, how would you make sure that Grace Farms is adhering to the conditions that it's suggesting? Why does, uh, why is it necessary to eliminate finding number eleven, which, uh, as you know, specifically says, there shall be no renting or use of any portion of the property, including any building or athletic field to outside commercial or for-profit organization. Now, Mr. O'Hanlon says there's no proposal that, um, the property be rented to for-profit organizations. But, uh, he suggests that, uh, Grace Farms could grant use of the property to a, uh, significant for, uh, profit donor, which is the essential equivalent of renting the property to the for-profit organization. The, the transformation from a, uh, reportedly charitable, religious, uh, philanthropic center into any for-profit commercial use. We are absolutely categorically opposed. And we think, we agree with the remarks of many of the commissioners. We think it's totally unnecessary, because individuals from for-profit corporations and commercial entities are free to attend and can be invited to attend Grace Farms events. Anything under the Grace Farms auspices is already permitted on the property. And there's no reason why they can't attend an event as a representative of a for-profit entity, but to allow them to operate or use the Grace Farms property opens the door to commercial use of the property. What about reduction of the reporting requirement? Why, why is that a concern? Well, one of the, uh, principal concerns that Mr. Kurt and Ms. Bissonette had with respect to the twenty seventeen, uh, special permit was the lack of transparency, reporting transparency imposed on Grace Farms. There was litigation, as you know, and that was resolved, um, partly resolved by a modification or requested modification to this condition, to require this reporting, um, we the, if the report, Mr., according to Mr. O'Hanlon, Grace Farms is going to prepare the monthly reports, whether or not they are submitted to the town on a monthly basis. So it would seem to us to be, there, there, there could only be minor in administrative inconvenience by requiring that Grace Farms submit these reports on a monthly basis. If the staff finds that reviewing the reports on a monthly basis is, uh, burdensome, then the staff could require Grace, the Grace Farms identify any exceedance, uh, of the activity chart in condition number sixteen. They could, um, require that Grace Farms submit, in addition to the monthly reports, they could require that Grace Farms submit uh, quarterly or, uh, semi-annual summaries. But, but why the reduction? All that does is decrease transparency, and it may not make a difference to the staff, but it allows the people who are most directly impacted by the activity at Grace Farms, who are the neighbors, to monitor what's going on there. And that's a very, very important component of the special permit, uh, for our clients. So we think that the proposed revision makes no sense. And, and Grace Farms really doesn't put forth any cogent reason for wanting to reduce that requirement. And lastly, um, Grace Farms is in violation of the twenty seventeen special permit, because they have not complied with uh, condition number one hundred and one. The landscaping and associated screening required by condition one oh one has not been completed. And under your zoning regulations, you are not allowed to approve a, uh, special permit application if there is a zoning violation on the property and there is a zoning violation on the property. Now, we contacted, um, Mr. O'Hanlon and asked whether that had been completed in November. We didn't receive a response. I contacted, um, Lynn, and she said that, uh, to ask if she had inspected, and she said that onsite inspections had been, um, suspended as a result of COVID. Um, so presumably, um, she hasn't been out to check, but from the photographs that have been submitted, it's clear that the uh, requirements of condition, uh, one hundred and one have not been met. I thank you for the opportunity to comment on the applications.
Thank you, Mr. Sherwood. Who else would like to address the application, please?
Mr. Chairman, Amy Sutches.
Ms. Sutches, please go ahead.
Thank you. Uh, for the record, Amy Sutches here, representing, uh, David Marquados and Jennifer Home, who are also, as you know, adjacent property owners. Uh, here, did want to note for the record that despite the representation in the application materials, that we were given a copy of this application uh, for comment and, uh, discussion with Grace Farms back in December, we actually did not receive a copy um, until it was posted on the town's website approximately eleven days ago. And then later that afternoon, received a copy, uh, from Attorney O'Hanlon. So we have been, um, and I'll show you some photos. We have not been able to consult with our landscape architect to address some of the screening issues that are raised. We have not been able to consult with our landscape architect to address some of the screening issues that are raised. I'll show you a photo of, of what my clients would see based on a storage container out there. But I think most importantly, what the commission needs to remember is that this application is very much like it was in two thousand sixteen and seventeen when the amended special permit was sought. This is very much a Trojan horse, a Grace, Grace Community Church serving as a Trojan horse for the foundation. When you sort of look at the actual merits of what is being requested from you with respect to these amendments, you know, the, the stated reason is to benefit Grace Community Church, but in fact, what it does is it takes Grace Community Church and relegates it to a small corner of the property, frees up parking spaces in the main parking lot for the foundation and its activities, as a number of you noted. And also takes the church out of the main buildings in the East Barn and puts them into the Puddin Hill House in order to, as, you know, as, as apparently is undetermined what will happen with that space. And with that in mind, I think the concern is, as Attorney Sherwood just noted, that the conditions as drafted and the representations made in the application are not going to provide an effective limitation on Grace, Grace Farm Foundation's, frankly, unmitigated growth that is readily apparent in the documents. That it's, that it has, has compiled over the years. Specifically, if you look at their annual reports, and I will highlight a few things in those for you. You can see that despite, you know, Attorney O'Handlon's representation earlier tonight, that there are no plans to expand the operations or programs. The last three years have shown very consistent and very sustained growth in the operations and, and programming that the, that the foundation offers. And being able to relocate the church provides the foundation with the opportunity to, to do that. But if I could just turn to a screen share, if I could screen share, I'd like to pull up the public hearing, excuse me, one of our exhibits.
Amy, do you know which exhibit it is? Because you have, you have like a hundred and three documents.
So it's, it's number thirty-three.
Okay, so give me a second and I'll pull it up.
So what, as, as Lynn's pulling that up, what I wanted to focus on is this issue that what is proposed in this application does not involve any issues of intensity. In fact, what is being proposed is an expansion of the, as you know, the expansion of the parking lot and the building itself. What the commission may not be aware of is that there have been other issues related to intensity that have been before the ZBA with respect to other work that Grace Farms has undertaken in the operation center and in the West Barn to date. And back in September of two thousand nineteen, when we were before the planning and zoning, excuse me, the ZBA, there was a colloquy between number of the ZBA members and Attorney O'Handlon. Lynn, I'm looking first for the page that's marked one fourteen at the top. So right there. And one of the questions that was asked, you know, between the ZBA members and Attorney O'Handlon was in fact, what would be an example of intensification on the Grace Farm site? And so, as you'll see, starting at line five or line three, Mr. Mahoney, who's a member of the ZBA, asked Mr. O'Handlon, you know, what would be an intensification on the property, to which he responded, well, intensification would be if Grace Farms wanted to add, put more parking. If it wanted to add parking, that's an intensification because it's going to allow more people to visit the site. And Lynn, if we could go down to page one sixteen. Thank you. Same thing. Starting at line eight, Mr. O'Handlon, Grace Farms has a special permit to operate as a charitable organization and has defined its operation very specifically in the special permit. If it wanted to have larger events, if it wanted to expand its events to other types of organizations besides nonprofits, if it wanted to increase the athletic field use or anything like that, that's an intensification. So I think, you know, almost immediately, you need to disregard the representations that have been made in the application materials to you that this proposal to add additional parking, to expand the Puddin Hill House, to allow this type of, frankly, a sustainability event under a different name is not an intensification. It's, it's already been, in another context, readily admitted that that would be an intensification of what is going on on this property. And, and I think that's important when you turn to, as I said, the activities that have been happening year over year. Lynn, if you could pull up thirty-four C, it's the two thousand nineteen Grace Farms annual report.
Can you give me a second?
Yeah, thanks. But when you, so, hold on a second, I can tell you what page. So when you look, when you look at the annual report, and we've included also the two thousand seventeen and two thousand eighteen annual reports in the record. And I do think it's important for the commission in evaluating what the request is before you tonight, particularly with the sustainability events. The, you know, as Attorney Sherwood noted, the existing violations on the property that have been stated and the representation that there are no plans to grow or have a, you know, a certain number of events that, if you look at the annual reports, in particular, you can see that year over year, the number of events have continued to expand and Grace Farms has, you know, used all of its available space to work on that. Lynn, what I'm looking for is if you look at page, it's twenty-seven on the lower right.
Is that the highlighted one that you're looking for?
Page twenty, yeah, twenty-seven.
No, that's fifty-three, okay.
This one. So as you see here, there were four hundred, and this goes right back to the question about the casual attendance and, you know, how there would be an ability to monitor or enforce the condition for these sustainability events as written. There were four hundred events and programs hosted by Grace Farms in two hundred, in twenty nineteen. Lower right notes that there were eleven hundred individual, eleven hundred plus individuals from nonprofits, government agencies, quasi-governmental agencies that participated in the space grant program. And another thing is that their space grant program over the years has expanded to include, as noted in the annual report, that they now have not only the space grants that I think many of you are familiar with from the prior years, but they now have something called a program partner. And I think that ties into the, the condition that you have talked about. And the question is what, what these partners are. Lynn, if we could scroll down to page sixty-seven. These are additional organizations that apparently have a different type of programming or different level. They are distinguished separately from space grants. So query what the purpose of these organizations are. Certainly, there are some nonprofits among them, but as you can see, something like the Nature Conservancy or Save the Children that is the select partner clearly has its own space, clearly has its own resources and opportunities. And so the idea that these organizations would be allowed to operate in a residential zone in New Canaan seemed frankly counterintuitive to what the idea of what the commission understood in twenty seventeen when it was supporting the idea that, that, that space grants could continue to occur and the representation that those would generally fall within the casual attendance category. And so I think this commission, I'm all set with this one, Lynn, thanks. I think the commission can recognize and has recognized in a number of other contexts quite how much of a challenge enforcement has been in New Canaan. And that's an important consideration for us in reviewing what Grace Farms has asked. You know, Mr. Turner, you've referenced it in regard to Silver Hill. Ms. Nielsen referenced it with respect to this application back in two thousand seventeen. It's come up with lighting issues at New Canaan Country School. And so I think, you know, the commission's mindset should be recognizing that anything other than complete and utter clarity in a special permit, particularly in this context where there is a history of zoning violations, certainly pushing the boundaries of what is allowed under the special permit. And then particularly with these frankly, very ambiguous and misleading conditions that have been drafted with respect to the proposal before you, I think the important things in, in looking at these conditions are that they really aren't, you know, despite some of the representations that have been made by, by the Grace Farms team tonight, they certainly are not the model of clarity and the commission and certainly the neighbors cannot, can no longer rely on, on, you know, Mr. O'Handlon's representation that it should be good faith. The last three years, and I think a number of the exhibits that we have provided that show that there have been repeated instances of, you know, things that are relatively straightforward violations, lights on past a certain time. As Mr. Sherwood noted earlier, landscaping that hasn't been completed. All of those things demonstrate that, you know, good, good faith alone is not enough in this context. It, it needs to be very clear in, in the permit. And so with that in mind, I think there are a couple of key considerations in the conditions that have been drafted, certainly on number forty-one. The condition says that eighty-two Puddin Hill Road is authorized for the principal uses set forth in findings three through seven of the special permit. Well, the representation to you tonight has been that the Grace Community Church is going to relocate to that building to provide privacy and its own operations and whatever else it is. Except when you go back to the special permit itself, findings three through seven include all of the principal uses allowed on the Grace Farms site. So adopting this condition as written would in fact allow Grace Farms two days after the approval, six months after the approval, five years after the approval, to kick Grace Community Church out and expand its own operations for the foundation into that building. There's certainly nothing in the condition as written that, that restricts that building's use to Grace Community Church. Same thing with respect to the limitation on the existing condition about maintenance access to or only maintenance personnel accessing the driveway at the former eighty-two Puddin Hill in condition fifty-nine. There's no limitation on anybody's ability. It, it's simply a deletion. Anybody's ability to use that driveway, there is no limitation about accessing that parking lot for foundation activities, or if somebody simply preferred to park there. It's, it's in no way limited to Grace Community Church. And more importantly, I think the, that deletion highlights that there are a number of conflicts between these proposed conditions and a number of the other conditions in the, you know, in the special permit. The representation has been made that there are only of this small handful of conditions that are being modified. In fact, when you review it, it's not even close to the case. You know, as one example, condition twenty-one, which is not one of the ones that is sought to be amended in this application, specifies that there is a parking lot limitation on this site. And it, the former eighty-two Puddin Hill property has been merged into the three sixty-five Lutz Wood Road property. Condition twenty-one specifies that there is a maximum of two hundred and twenty-six parking spaces on the site. If you approve, the application is written, there is an inherent conflict between what you are proposing, what is being proposed and what is being shown on these plans and the terms of the special permit. And I do think that it's, you know, incumbent upon the applicant and the commission to review where those conflicts exist and for the applicant to actually ask for what would be consistent with what its desires are. And then with respect to these sustainability events, I think there are a number of the issues that have been, you know, raised by the commission members in the colloquy with Mr. Hamlin. You know, certainly, the, the obvious pause about the, you know, before answering about the fee is, is inherent in the language that says whether, whether for a fee or not, clearly implying that Grace Farms Foundation wants the ability to collect a fee if it has the opportunity. And I think it was, it was clear in, in the various answers you received tonight that Grace Farms Foundation would be happy to receive a fee for these types of sustainability events. And certainly, again, there's no limitation or clarity when you, you, when you read this, read this condition. I can envision, under the, the strict words of this condition, you could have, you know, for example, the, either the bag company we've been talking about, or the actual, you know, clothing company that, that was referenced earlier tonight. They can have a one hundred and seventy-five or one hundred and ninety-nine person gala event, pay a fee to Grace Farms Foundation. It could raise money for one of the Grace Farms events and feature Ms. Prince, Mrs. Prince as a principal speaker and otherwise be a completely private event. And if I want to be super cynical, you know, staff actively participating in an event, it could be Grace Farms catering the event as its active participation. You have no way to monitor, under the terms of this condition, what that event would be. And frankly, when you pair it with the elimination of the reporting condition, it could take place with, with nobody's awareness. You know, the, the benefit of the monthly reporting that occurs is that while it forces my clients and the other neighbors to act as sort of independent zoning enforcement officers and monitor what's going on at Grace Farms, it at least provides them the opportunity to do that. Whereas eliminating the reporting condition, as Mr. Sherwood also noted, just eliminates our ability to be able to keep an eye on what's scheduled, whether those events are consistent with the terms of the special permit and frankly, raise concerns or questions as, as outlined about what those events are. I think the other important component of this is that, I forgot which, which of you asked about the work of the item number three or subsection number three about the work of the GFF Core Initiative, and you were told that those were outlined in the special permit. The special permit doesn't talk about what the foundation's core initiatives are. They are referenced on their website, they are referenced on, you know, in the annual report or things like that. But certainly, there is nothing in the special permit itself that ties the foundation to any particular five initiatives that it has today, that it had in two thousand seventeen when the application was approved. Or with respect to how it may change in the future, if it decided to change its core initiative to witchcraft next year. Now, they could have events that were supporting that as a core initiative. There's, there's certainly no language or limit. There's there's certainly no language or limitation on the. Special permit itself to tie those core initiatives. And so then, you know, as I said, with respect to the reporting that also ties in. If, you know, the core initiatives could theoretically change or there's some sort of tangential. Connection to the core initiatives. The only way to figure those out and be able to monitor those is to ensure that is by ensuring that there is. You know, the monthly monthly reporting that is taking place. And so I think, you know, the the obvious answer to what Grace is requesting with respect to its. Opportu- it's it's availability and use of the site for these kind of. You know, what are in essence, the sustainability events that were rejected by this commission back in two thousand seventeen. Is one of the things that Attorney O'Hamlin mentioned. And the fact is, is that they want Grace Farms Foundation wants the convenience of being held, being able to hold events at its property. It can certainly do that as as you discussed earlier and in some of that back and forth. On under the terms of its, you know, whether it's the justice initiative or. Arts initiative, whatever it is, but these type of trainings or other events that would. Potentially bring not only finances to Grace Farms, but would bring certainly numbers of people to the site. Have an easy solution of going to them. There is no requirement, there is no reason that these trainings or other events that need to happen. That Grace Farms wants to have for, you know, its its for-profit partners. Need to happen in the backyards of my clients or frankly, any of the other surrounding neighbors. And so I think with that, the, you know, the reason we have concerns about that. And more of those events taking place is that there have been, you know, documented security events or excuse me, security issues. Over the years, there was a member of the Grace Farm staff who was arrested for voyeurism on the property. There have been trespassers who've been found on the property. There have been just visitors who have crossed over property lines, been found in my client's backyard over the years. This despite, you know, numerous security cameras all over the all over the property. And so clearly that is a, you know, a major concern when there is this type of. You know, open-ended opportunity to have, you know, north of, you know. Up to two hundred people on an event every day except for Monday and Sunday morning, under the terms of the special permit, under the guise of this. You know, revised condition. And I think that, you know, we we have tried to look at, you know, what. You know, if there was any opportunity here, we have we've provided some some draft conditions, but I think. You know, the the real concern with with what Grace has proposed in its existing conditions. Is the fact that they are, you know, number one ambiguous and number two. Internally conflicting with the with the terms of the existing existing special permit. I just want to touch on a couple of other points that I think are important considerations for the commission. Itself, number one, the letter that you received from Kathleen Holland with respect to the inland wetlands. Determination is outside of her authority. I think an application should have been brought to the full commission at the time this application was was filed. The staff, while it has the authority to handle administrative applications. Does not have the ability to make a determination as to as to jurisdiction. And that has a great deal of import to us because my client's property is actually listed on the National Register of Historic Places. And there are determinations made in the wetlands context that that involve that. Review process. And then with respect to. The traffic and parking considerations, again, it ties into the proposal to add the parking spaces here. We included in the record the two thousand thirteen Office of State Traffic Administration approval. While you don't have jurisdiction over that state agency, it's important for you to note that the. Application and state state was never notified. There is no information that we've been able to find or indicate that they were ever told that the additional principal uses or additional events would be taking place here. And most importantly, that approval, as you'll see, is tied to a specific square footage and a specific number of parking spaces. That are inconsistent with the proposal before you tonight. So certainly, we would request at minimum that there be a condition that ought to be notified. As part of any approval process. And then the issue with that that Attorney Sherwood had also raised with respect to. You know, your ability to approve a special permit modification when there are zoning violations on the property. There are certainly several, you know, he noted that there were issues with respect to his clients landscaping and conditions there. There have been numerous, as I said, violations about lighting and. There was also an unauthorized foundation that was operating at the property for about a year and a half conducting. We included in the record, it was called Unchained Foundation, it was operating at the property and hosted a number of events. At Grace Farms, it has since been dissolved. But there is now another entity that we believe is operating at the property. That is called GF Foods and included in the record materials that we had submitted. Number twenty two, I think is is a good example, it's a press release. But Grace Farms now has a monthly or whatever your choice is. Food subscription box, it's chocolate chip cookies, it's coffee. Consistent with what it's teas, everything that it is selling out of the. Tea room or tea volume and store, I think that's a violation of the property. As you can see in the materials that we provided, allegedly that organization is based at a PO box at the UPS store in New Canaan. That seems frankly, a bit preposterous to us. And so, given what they are selling and the fact that it is co-terminous with what is being sold. On the property, it it certainly seems like that organization is running out of out of the. Property and that would be obviously a violation of the the terms of the special permit. And last but not least, Mr. O'Hamlin had recognized or had commented that with respect to screening. That he was amenable to any recommendations that the commission may have with respect to. You know, screening on the property or other, Lynn, if you could pull up item number sixty five. As as I requested at the beginning, having only found out about this hearing about, you know, ten days ago. My clients have a landscape architect who they'd been working with previously when the special permit had been. Initially proposed back in two thousand sixteen and two thousand seventeen. And we have not been able to meet with him. And this is what this this dumpster is currently located in the general vicinity of where the parking lot. That's proposed would be located. Obviously, that's not a view that my clients want to see for a good portion of the year when there are no leaves on those. Obviously deciduous trees. And so we would like to request that the commission provide us with the opportunity, particularly since. You know, the representation has been made that that Grace would be amenable to any recommendations. To provide for us to be able to work with our landscape architect and provide a plan that could be a condition of approval. As many of the other neighbors, as you'll recall, there are conditions of approval for landscaping plans. That were designed to screen the impacts of Grace Farms from other prop for other property owners. We think that it would only be appropriate for us to be able to have the same opportunity. And we would like to request that time to allow us to get a plan together with our. Our architect and so would ask that the hearing be kept open until next month to allow us. The opportunity to work with that. Frankly, had we had the application when 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 the representation was made back in December, that we we had it. Maybe we would be in a different position, but given the the short lead time, we we were not not able to get a plan from him yet. So with that, I'm happy to address any other questions or comments you have from us, but I think. You know, in in some, the concern is is the. You know, the the boundary pushing on the terms of the special permit and frankly, the the ambiguity and. Inherent conflicts that will occur if this application is approved.
Thank you, Ms. Sutens. Anyone else from the public would like to address this application, please? Okay, Lynn, do you see anybody?
I don't, I do not see anybody.
Okay.
Who's Charlie? That's, yeah, everyone else is part of their team or part of either Attorney Sherwood or Attorney Sutens team.
Okay, Mr. O'Hamlin, closing thoughts or response? Mr. O'Hamlin?
He's on mute.
Right.
You should be able to unmute.
There we go. Can you hear me now?
We can hear you.
Thank you. I'll be very brief here. First of all, Mr. Sherwood is inaccurate. Grace Farms has planted everything that was required of it in connection with the two thousand seventeen special permit. And it planted everything that it agreed to plant as part of the settlement. And while Lynn has not, well, Steph has not been up to come out there because of the COVID. The invitation has been out there and. I'm a little surprised Mr. Sherwood say we haven't communicated because his clients have two sets of lawyers. And I've been working very closely with one set in connection with a erosion problem on the property line that. We have agreed amicably to resolve and have been working through consultants. Those lawyers have been on site and have been able to see the planting. Mr. Sherwood is not because he is their, I presume he's their zoning lawyer and hasn't been involved in any of this. But anyway, we are not in violation of that aspect of of the permit or indeed of of any aspect of the permit. As you can see, these are two rather, you know, implacable neighbors. We've tried to work with them. The only reason that this application was not sent to them in December, as it was stated, was because there was an issue about when it would be heard. And pursuant to our representation, once it was decided when it would be heard, we sent the entire application, not just the notice to them. But there was a complication with having it heard in January. And that was what the statement counsel is referring to was, once it was identified, there would be heard in February, we sent the the. The application out. But anyway, the bigger term is, I just. Grace Farms has sought to work with these folks and I think you've heard they don't trust staff, they don't trust Grace Farms. I don't think it's fair to staff, Grace Farms is a big, you know, can deal with itself, I can deal with the comments about me. But I just don't think it's fair, there is a rigorous scrutiny of what Grace Farm does. When there is a complaint and there had been a couple of instances where the lights didn't go off because the timers got disabled by a power failure. Grace Farms has received the complaint, acknowledged this responsibility and apologized. There are no other complaints, the other events are, you know, there is a. The aspects of an unauthorized foundation, this is pure speculation on their part and it wasn't even, and they 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 brought that to the attention of the ZBA. And the ZBA. Did not provide a relief, they tried to bring it to the attention of the court and the court's admonition in the oral argument was, I don't want to hear about that issue. Because there is no substance to it, it is pure speculation on their part. We have reported, once that was raised at the ZBA hearing, we reported the entire circumstances to staff. And staff consulted, I assume consulted with counsel and and no further questions or or. Or action has been warranted because their concern is just pure speculation, it wasn't valid. The, I just looked through the special permit and I have to concede one thing is correct. I mean, Grace Farms, this this special permit, as you recall, came from a. The revised application that Grace Farms filed in two thousand seventeen where we submitted a very detailed master plan, operations plan. In that operations plan, we outlined the five specific initiatives in our five oh one C three. Approval from the IRS, it's based upon those five specific initiatives. And the council is correct that apparently in the final iteration of special permit, you don't recite them. But I think you know that they have been part of, part and parcel of this entire application. And Grace Farms would not be able to change them as counsel suggests and comply with its. Its charitable status under the tax laws. But again, this is just the type of of. Opposition that we're getting, there's just, it's based upon speculation, it's based upon, you know, boarding on paranoia. I would submit that that picture. You know, what what right does a does a neighbor that's eight hundred feet away have not to see through a deciduous tree in the middle of winter? You look at that that picture that they just put up there, number sixty five, they'll never see that site in the summer. And if again, if there is additional planting that the commission feels is necessary based upon its consultation with staff, we would entertain it. The. The statements that council used about my. Representations I made to the ZBA were exactly that and they were accurate. The question was, is what would what would be an example of Grace Farms intensifying its activities illegally? And that would be by. Violating that prohibition against working with with prop for-profit corporations. Or adding parking spaces, which we went through, she didn't show you a lengthy explanation and I didn't do it too well tonight with Mr. Hearing. But a lengthy explanation of what the parking limitations serve to as a control on the site. But the idea is that, yes, they can't unilaterally do that. But they can do it when they approach the commission and ask for a reason with a reason basis for a change of the special permit. And that's what this is. So, you know, the sort of gotcha and all this stuff is just not, it's it's not helpful. If if the commission wants to commission, wants to condition the approval of the. Grace Community Church's use of of eighty two Puddin Hill Road as a specific condition, then we'll be happy to take that. There there's no agenda here to manipulate or to 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 do something we can't do. It's just that it thought it would be easier if you're going to repurpose the building. And and if Grace Community Church decided to leave, you've got a building there that's 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 available. But if if you want to condition it on the use of that. But again, the 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 idea is that this is, we we tried to make this clear in this application that these are self-limiting. Adding parking spaces is something that you have the ability to do under this, to to approve under the special permit. We have made these parking spaces limited. We have not allowed access to the site through that lot. We will, you know, any signage that you want is appro- you know, we would certainly use. But again, there, the the idea that somehow there's this agenda to manipulate or to take advantage is just not fair to Grace Farms. And again. I think that is is my list, but I'm particularly concerned about, you know, the letter from Kathleen Holland outside of her authority. There's a, there's a wetland scientist report that says that on that, in that four-point former lot, four-point acres, there's no wetlands. And and it tied the rest of that, even because that lot has been merged to the other wetlands on the site. So I believe Kathleen Holland has every just every amount of authority and discretion to submit the report she has. But again, these people don't trust anything the town does. And again, I think that the the level of detail and the events they're looking for there's. I would urge you to, if you want to form conditions to to. Limit further what Grace Farms is doing because of some, perhaps we welcome them. But the idea that somehow there's some agenda Grace Farms to buzz place up, look at the three years we've been operating. And ask staff if there have been numerous violations, ask staff if any other neighbors. And ask staff if there have been numerous violations. Ask staff if any other neighbors have complained. The only thing you hear is a constant effort and we are working actively with the Kirk Cissinette people through another lawyer. I I regret that they didn't bring those lawyers here and tell you. But to resolve another issue on their property that that we've agreed, it doesn't matter how it happened, we're both going to fix it. So again, I just, the, you know, it's the good Shakespeare, never trust a zealot, but these oppositions have become zealous. Zealous. And it's not balanced, it's not fair. And I think that you have the every ability based on what you've seen in Grace Farms to sort this out and we'd ask that you approve these requests with with whatever conditions you want.
Okay, thank you, Mr. O'Hanlon. Missioners, what I would like to do is close this hearing. I think we know what we need to know to Ms. Sutens' request for more time for screening. Lynn, I think what we could do there is, you know, the critical path there would be, first of all, as I understand, it would only happen if we were approving that part of the application. And then I think what we could do is then let you work on the screening part. So I think effectively, you know, Ms. Sutens could ultimately have her input. Do you agree with my interpretation?
So basically hold it open so that they could offer thoughts and inputs?
What I wanted to close the hearing.
No, after closing the hearing, but hold open the idea that they could offer thoughts and inputs on the landscaping?
Yeah, what I'm trying, what I'm trying to accomplish here is Mrs. Sutens has requested we keep the the hearing open so she and and any commissioner, you know, jump in here. But she has requested to keep the hearing open so she could have additional input on screening. I would like to close the hearing and if we did go in the direction of approval of Puddin Hill, which is where she's making the point, she would like to have input, then we could condition it with, you know, as we've done before, we could put that on your plate and she could effectively have input that way.
We could potentially do that.
Okay. Okay, I mean, commissioners, Ms. Sutens?
I, if I could just be heard on that point, that was tried previously that the landscaping be left open to the discretion of staff. I recognize that that was a predecessor to Ms. Abney, but the concern, frankly, the concern is, is that we have no opportunity that if it's left open, if Grace Farms never does it versus a condition of approval with a specific plan, we have no opportunity to be able to say it didn't happen because it was left open to to staff discretion or interpretation. It's it's not a specific plan incorporated as a record plan set in the special permit.
Okay, thank you for your input. It has historically worked for us. Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
I would agree with you, John. I think that that's a better way of handling.
Okay, anybody else?
I agree with you too, John.
Okay, okay, this hearing's closed. Okay, item number seven, deliberation, any possible action on a closed public hearing item? 92 West Hills Road, do I have a motion for approval or denial? Feel free to unmute yourselves.
I move to approve.
Okay, Claire, Claire, reasons for approval, please?
It just seems that this application is simply to beautify and enhance the Schoen-Holtz's property. You can't see it from the road and it'll be private and I think it'll just be beneficial to the applicant.
Okay, great. Do I have a, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, that was Jean. Any additional discussion on the motion?
I don't think so, no.
Okay, anybody else? Everybody good? Okay. John Goodwin, I vote yes. Jean Grislacki?
Yes.
John Cris?
Yes.
Dan Radman?
Yes.
Claire Tiscornia?
Yes.
Ken Turner?
Yes.
Dick Ward?
Yes.
Bill Williams?
Yes.
Krista Nielsen?
Yes.
Okay, then motion, the application's unanimously approved. 487 West Road was continued. 1380 Ponus Ridge Road, do I have a motion for approval or denial?
I'll move to approve.
Okay, Mr. Cassavant, reasons for approval?
A well-designed structure, not obvious from the street, consistent with the neighborhood and a sensible use of discretionary approval by this committee.
Okay, now do I have a second?
Second.
I heard Dan, I saw Phil. Phil, did you wave second?
Yeah, so I waved second that.
Okay. Any commissioners, any additional input? One thing that I would like to note, and we've noted this on other similar applications, is modern architecture is extremely important to New Canaan. It is, you know, one of the it's one of the big things that makes New Canaan, New Canaan. And I, you know, my view of the plan that the applicant presented was sort of right down the fairway, so to speak, of what we're trying to achieve with that provision. I did share, I think it was Dan's concerns, maybe it was and Kent's as well, about would it be too prominent being sort of higher up on that elevation and the architect sort of gave me comfort that they had designed that pretty well as well. So that's my additional input. Anybody else?
John, I just would also highlight the fact that the architects seem to have worked on the the restoration of the original building in the, in a previous project.
Is that you?
Yeah.
Chris, unfortunately, you're not seated for this vote.
Oh, yeah, thank you.
I'm sure it's going to be good input, though. Anybody else?
I would, I would just add that I think it's a very, a very well-designed, a very thought-out solution to adding on to the property. Sympathetic and and respectful of the original mid-century modern. And I think it works really well.
Okay, great. Okay, call the motion. John, go to and I vote yes. Jean Grislacki?
Yes.
John Cris?
I have accused myself on this.
Oh, right, right. Sorry, John. Dan Radman?
Yes.
Claire Tiscornia?
Yes.
Ken Turner?
Yes.
Dick Ward?
Yes.
Bill Williams?
Yes.
Krista Nielsen?
Yes.
Art Cassavant?
Yes.
Okay, carries unanimously. Thank you. 49 North Wilton is continued, 842 Ponus Ridge, do I have a motion for approval or denial?
I move we approve with some conditions.
Okay, fire away, John. Maybe, John, reasons for approval and then conditions, please?
I I see the impact of this proposed use of the site for onsite parking for visitors as having a minimal negative effect. Have not received any negative input from neighbors. And given current conditions, health-wise, this type of access to the property seems necessary. The proviser I would have is that the temporary waiver of the condition of onsite parking terminate either December 15, the end of their tour year, or when the governor allows buses or removes the various restrictions that are now impacting. So at the end of the year, we'll see how things go and make a decision at that point, but it will be a firm sunset at least December 15.
Let's up, let's hope bus allowance kicks in first.
Let us hope so, yeah.
Yeah. Do I have a second on the motion?
Second.
Okay, Claire. Okay, any further discussion of the motion? You know, what I'll add, I've said this before, is is I, you know, great at Grace Farms. The Glass House has continued to do, I think, a very good job of general compliance as well as complying to the COVID restrictions as well. Anybody else?
I would just note that other options such as the school not really available because the school's being used as well as the potentially using the neighbor in Stanford, the daycare is is not reasonable either. And so other options have been explored and I think reasonably rejected. So this seems to be the only option reasonably available and seems to be a very low impact one.
Okay, perfect. Thank you, John. I call the motion. John Goodwin, I vote yes. Jean Grislacki?
Yes.
John Cris?
Yes.
Dan Radman?
Yes.
Claire Tiscornia?
Yes.
Ken Turner?
Yes.
Dick Ward?
Yes.
Bill Williams?
Yes.
Krista Nielsen?
Yes.
Okay, great. 365 Luke's Wood Road, I'm certainly not ready to make a decision. So we can do one of two things. One is we can just get some thoughts right now if anybody has any thoughts or two is we can take a month to think about it and then revisit it at our March hearing. Anybody have a preference?
John, I have a procedural question. Is there any way we could vote on the three individually or is it just one package?
I, Lynn, correct me if I'm wrong. I I think we can vote on them, on the three of them individually. Lynn, do you agree or not?
You're, sorry, I'm muted. Sorry. They're asking for a modification. They're asking for three distinct modifications. So you can make edits to what they're asking you to modify. You can take what their suggestion, what they are suggesting, or you can change it and modify it further. So
You're saying single vote, but we could say we're not allowing the modification for the reporting, but we're allowing the modification for Puddin Hill, for example. That's your point.
Yes, exactly. I'm sorry. The hour is late for me. Sorry.
Yeah, no, no, it's, no, I'm just going to be clear. Claire, that Claire, that makes sense, right?
Yes.
Okay, anybody else? Any other thoughts?
I would just suggest that we may want to get some discussion going now and decision being made most likely in March. Sounds like a very good approach to me, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thoughts? The other thing we can also talk about is if we, you know, want Lynn to think more about things, but but any thoughts on any of the three provisions?
Well, I certainly agree that we need a little more time. There was just a mass of paper sent to us today. Hardly have time to even scan. So I'd like to have a little more opportunity to just sort of thumb through some of the paperwork that's been submitted by both sides.
Anybody else?
Just a few comments on the Puddin Hill property. Should the commission, its wisdom decide to approve it, there are things that the commission may wish to consider. One is that if I just remember correctly, the applicant said that the gate is currently blocking the driveway that accesses the Puddin Hill residency would be eliminated. I would suggest that perhaps we may want to require that it remain and be locked up at night so there's not a a gap in their perimeter for safety and security reasons. Also that perhaps that entrance be camouflaged so that even during the day, perhaps if it's just dark during the day, you know, different part of the the year when it gets dark early, people may still be inside the the property and or inside the building. And this way, anyone who is accessing that area can be monitored just for safety and security reasons. Would be a good idea.
Okay, thank you, John. Anybody else?
Yeah, I'd like to make a quick comment to to Mr. O'Hanlon. I'm the one who asked a question about the core initiatives and whether they would, could change or what controlled them. And Mr. O'Hanlon did say to me that they were in the special permit. And when I said, well, therefore they couldn't be changed unless we approved a change in the special permit, he agreed, yes. And Ms. Sutens pointed out that just that did not seem to be accurate. And Mr. O'Hanlon did apologize and acknowledged that 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 answer had perhaps been a bit hasty. But hasty answers that are not correct disturb me.
Okay.
Expanding Mr. Ward's comment that given the priorities of Grace Farms, those priorities can be interpreted, I would think, rather widely. And Sutens mentions changing it to witchcraft. It actually is approved because that falls under faith. So again, it demonstrates that these things can be interpreted broadly.
I'm not touching that, John.
Okay. Just saying, we're embracing diversity here. Hey, one man's witchcraft is another man's religion. It's a free country, friends.
Okay, let's let's get back on the highway. Can you have some thought?
I'd like to introduce the idea for Grace Farms. The office building renovation is not ADA compliant. I realize that religious institution doesn't have to comply with ADA. But, you know, I think your values, what you represent of everybody, able-bodied people, et cetera. And, you know, I strongly suggest that you consider bringing the building up to full compliance so that everybody could use that that new facility.
Okay, if we, if we went in the direction of an approval, we could put it into our P and Z wishes, so to speak, that we've occasionally done. Anybody else? Yep.
Mentioned the screening issues. As members of the commission know, this is one of my pet peeves. And I would just want to ensure that the if the berm is in fact extended, and this assumes that the commission's wisdom approves the put designation of the Puddin Hill property, that the berm be of an appropriate size for screening and that any and all plantings around the berm, on the berm or maybe around parts of the parking lot be at only thick and provide good screening, but also be native plants that are helpful to the environment, which I'm sure is something that Grace Farms is in favor of. And I'd be happy to work with the zoning office in doing that.
Great. That could be helpful. Thank you, John. Anybody else?
Well, I think that perhaps next month we need to talk a little bit more about the for-profit corporation involvement and expansion of their involvement. Because I think there are some questions as to is, are the changes really needed? That the language that currently exists would seem to cover perhaps a lot of what we might consider to be useful and appropriate training sessions or whatever they wish to do with respect to the core initiatives. Maybe there is some language that needs to be clarified, but I think we need to think about it.
Okay.
I would not want to see the door opened.
I agree with Dick.
Yeah, agreed.
Causing this. Yeah, I don't see what has brought this up. I I feel like the conditions that we laid out in special permit, whenever 2017, were sufficient.
Agreed.
And still are sufficient to allow it to operate exactly how it's being described.
Yeah.
Or proposed.
I would also note that the proposal to amend condition 92. Condition 92 is really designed, as I recall, to provide the community, particularly neighbors, with a heads up on what's happening in in more or less real time. The changes that are being suggested by the applicant seem to be making The changes that are being suggested by the applicant seem to be making randomly more of archaeological interest. And I'm not sure that's really into the commission was when this condition was imposed.
It's interesting on, on that, so you know, I think, I think what we heard from the neighbors is they do view this as a source of information they feel they need to see. Now, on the other hand, we've heard from Lynn and the planners memo that Lynn, I don't, I don't want to speak for you, but I, I think you know, what you've said is their compliance track record. I mean, there have been these obvious, you know, one or two bad things that happened. But I think your feedback generally has been on sort of a month-to-month basis. The compliance record has been pretty good. But you were, you're, you're being, your office is being overwhelmed by the monthly reporting. Why don't you just talk a little bit about what you said in your planner's memo?
Um, yeah, so you read it correctly. So I think that on a staff level that, that, you know, we're a department of three. And, you know, it just takes a lot of time and it's very tedious. And it's a lot of information that gets changed because the way they're reporting is they're reporting in a given month. So if they're reporting on January twenty-fifth, you're going to get the report for January, you're going to be in the month of February. So then you would look at the future for March. But their month, their month in arrears actually provides real-time data. Their months forward just provides their planning concept and where they're going. And then it gets updated and corrected when they finally report for that month. So it's kind of duplicative. And it's, it's like over, it, it's like a double set of eyes to reviews. We're reviewing, reviewing internally, the staff is reviewing what they're planning to do for the future. And then we're reviewing after they actually do it. And it's really not so helpful. It would only be helpful to give us information about what they actually did. So you're not going back to change things because you can actually see like they'll have an event, a garden club event. And they'll project that there are going to be twenty-five people that are going to attend. And then the, the information comes in two months later and it says, well, actually it was eighteen people that came. So, so it's even under sometimes what they planned. But they adjust it. And then earlier in my tenure in this position, there were issues with when they would adjust things because the planning tool, when they look at them on foot and in front of them, you know, sometimes they would make adjustments and then the neighbors would call and say, wait, wait, it says, you know, there's, there were twenty-five people and then there were really thirty-two. So it, it can also provide confusion. I think the, the past, providing information on the past is much more efficient and not necessarily the future events. And perhaps maybe it to kind of sort of split it since there's concern about a six-month versus a one-month, maybe it just comes in quarterly because it's just more concise and it provides more information. And it would be easier for for staff to digest. We spend a lot of time poring over these reports, going back each reporting period and reporting over, re, re, reviewing the past ones a lot more time than we do for most applications. So.
What would be of most interest to the neighbors? If I were a neighbor, wouldn't I want to see what they are planning in the next month so that if it's something that's a bit off the charts, you could complain? I mean, it, it perhaps puts a bit of a spotlight on the future. And sometimes the spotlight is what causes compliance.
You could, we, the only, in my tenure, and I can only speak to my tenure, which is pretty short for the length of time that you guys have reviewed this application. Because you guys have been reviewing this, the, the site since two thousand and seven. But the only, in my tenure, it, it, it's only added to confusion where, you know, we've gotten complaints of the numbers changed or they renamed the event or now it was, you know, it, it, it didn't occur the way they expected to. And all the times that that happened, the event was significantly smaller than two hundred people. You know, it was probably well under a hundred. I think most of the events where that happened, it was, you know, under fifty people. And, and just to, to Grace's credit, they've actually been on their reporting, their monthly reporting calendar still during COVID, they've been reporting events when they're virtual events. And that's not even taking place on their site. So they're reporting when they hold a virtual event as well, I, I mean, for this past year. So the numbers, if you look at the numbers for the number of visitors, it's, it's basically their employees that are probably coming in and out of the site because the numbers significantly drop after they closed in, in March. And, and then they report virtual events as, you know, as they're happening.
That they can report quarterly. And if the neighbors want to know what's happening, I'm sure Grace Farms has a calendar on their website that announces meetings.
There's a very detailed calendar on the church website. And I'd have to double check the Grace website, but I think there is.
You know, I, I wasn't seated for this, but my question about quarterly reporting is exactly that. It would provide a middle ground between what's happening now, which is too much data. But you can't manage what you can't measure. If you moved it to quarterly, why don't you see what happens?
Yeah, my, Lynn, I sort of got, I mean, guys, tell me if I'm wrong. I, I sort of got the impression that what was more important for the neighbors was not so much, tell me if I'm wrong, what they were planning on doing, but just monitoring what was actually happening. Maybe that's one of the same thing, but. Anyway.
I think there's a little bit of gotcha going on there.
Gotcha.
You had thirty-five people. Now there were only thirty people, you know, that, that kind of foolishness that happens a lot.
Okay. So checking on historical and seeing if, and identify where they didn't get it right.
Well, you know, I, I think you have to look at, look at the total picture, you know. Yeah, there is some gotcha going on. But, you know, we have a lot of frustrated neighbors that believe that the conditions have not been met. We are not really quantifying if that's, if that's true or not. We're not able to, you know, enforce it. You know, Lynn, I know you're incredibly busy. You know, it's very hard to, you know, keep track of what's going on. But I think we have to take for, you know, what's being said by all these neighbors that there are issues going on and they need to be resolved. You know, landscaping is easy. And I, you know, I heard tonight that, you know, we, we've done everything that's, you know, we, we were told, that we were forced to do by, you know, special permit. Well, you know, somebody's got to decide if that's true or not. You know, we don't know. But the neighbors seem to know, and the neighbors are the ones that are being impacted by this. You know, the shades don't go down at night, the lights stay on, you know, it's, it's a constant issue.
And if, if the neighbors are reporting to us incorrectly, then they need to get a little bit of the back of the hand because that, that's not helpful to us as commissioners to be told the landscaping hasn't been done, that they're in continuing violation. I mean, somebody is right and somebody is wrong.
And we don't know.
Well, I, I think Lynn, what would be helpful is when for next month, eh, you know, I, I think COVID caused some challenges and everybody even acknowledged that. But, but this landscaping thing has been, it's been challenging, I think, hasn't some of the ZBA appeals involve landscaping, Lynn, or am I incorrect on that?
No, the, the ZBA appeals did not involve around landscaping. They're, they're all drawn to distinct, two distinct zoning permits.
Okay. Then I, I think Lynn, though, what would be helpful is for our March discussion for you to report back to us on exactly where we, where are we on the landscaping issues?
Okay.
Anybody else? Okay, well, what I would suggest is obviously, as always, Dick is, Dick, Dick is exactly right. We had an onslaught of information that came in today. So we need to wade through that. I would, you know, in general, we're going to read everything, but I, I would advise give the two thousand and seventeen special permit a very close read. And, and let's remember, you know, sort of how we came up with that two thousand and seventeen special permit, you know. Remember, we had Glenn Schauder involved. And, you know, for the commissioners on the commission then. And remember that, you know, what we attempted to do was to go through this process of, you know, sort of trying to figure out what could work for Grace in seventeen and what could work for the neighbors. And, you know, that was the whole idea of, you know, me originally said, look, let's bring in Schauder, let's make a project of this and, and try to put things around it. So my suggestion is go back to that permit. And, you know, and then think to, you know, the, the grace arguments that we've received today and, and the, the neighbor input that we've received today and you know, think about, you know, what could could be changed or, you know, if there are certain changes that sort of get in the way of what were some of the objectives of the two thousand and seventeen special permit, then it seems to me that's a problem. I think for those of us who may be inclined to approve on the on the, you know, on the initiative side, I, I think a lot of time does have to be put into thinking about the wording. So that's a challenge. You know, we always talk about when we're doing planning, for example, when we do reg amendments. You know, one of the questions we're always asking is, you know, what are the unintended consequences? So I think, you know, we have to, and I'm not saying there, you know, we've heard both sides to that. But, you know, that's something we definitely have to think about. As everybody knows, you know, you have the ability, as you think through this, to, you know, discuss this with Lynn. So, you know, feel free to do that and you know, and then for March, let's see if we can put together, you know, a, a commission view and have conditions ready, no matter, you know, which way you're going. And then, you know, my guess is we, we may be able to make a decision in March or we may end up coming up with parameters of a decision in March and then taking one additional month, which we, we can do, right, Lynn? We have two months, right, Lynn?
Yeah, you, you have time because under the, the current executive orders for the state, we have extra ninety days for the process.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I keep forgetting about that.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to just make one observation that I, I agree with your comment that it's been, what, almost fifteen years that we have been seeing a lot of the Grace Farms issues and the neighbors' issues. And I think we have tried very hard to create a balance. The neighbors have been tough. There's no question. And I can appreciate Mr. O'Handlon's comment that the neighbors are, they're pretty hard to satisfy. However, Grace Farms are no wilting flowers either. And it's, it's, we're the ones who have tried, I think, and I think we've done a pretty good job in trying to come up with a balance. And I must say that I strongly object to Attorney Sujin's attempting to have you recuse yourself. I looked through the materials that she sort of based it on. And it was very thin materials to try to put forward a recusing the chairman. So I think that for the record, I for one would, I agree completely with your comments. I don't think you have been leaning in favor of Grace Farms. And I don't think you have been take, going out of your way to degruner, degrunrate whatever the neighbors may have said. I think to the contrary, that you've tried to reach a balance.
Thank you, Dick. I appreciate that.
I'll second that.
Okay, thank you, Ken. Okay, well, on that note, maybe we move on. Does anybody have any last thoughts? Everybody good? Okay. Thank you again, Dick. I really appreciate that. Planning Subcommittee update. Krista, any, any additional thoughts? I, I thought the six o'clock meeting was fantastic.
Uh, thank you. For those who did not attend, I mean, we had pretty good attendance, but for those who did not attend, we talked about affordable housing tonight and Art gave a really great presentation on, you know, what New Canaan has done and how affordable housing works, particularly from the financing perspective. And so I'm hoping we're going to be able to have a meeting again next month before the regular planning commission meeting where we continue this conversation. We didn't, unfortunately, did not have a lot of time to digest it all, but hopefully we can talk some more and I'm, Lynn and I will send out a link to the housing, what is it called? Housing Opportunities Recommended Strategy Study that was done in two thousand and eleven. It's on, on the town's website, on the planning commission's website. But we'll send a link out to, you know, everybody on the subcommittees because I want you to review that before the next meeting and I want to focus on a conversation about inclusionary zoning and how we might move forward with that in New Canaan.
Right. And, sorry, John.
A suggestion, would it be appropriate, Mr. Chairman, to ask someone from the our own housing authority to join this discussion, at least as an audience member?
I, well, it's Krista's Subcommittee. I personally think it's a fantastic idea. Krista, I've been talking to Scott Hobbs, who's the chair. Art knows him. Krista, I don't know if you've spoken to Scott, but I, I know you guys, you're working on that. So I, I think that, well, Krista, it's your Subcommittee.
Yeah, no, I, I don't have any issue with that. And I definitely, I mean, so I think that's fine for the next meeting, yes. And then I think as we move forward, depending on how the next meeting goes, there, there might need to even be a broader group of people that participate in that conversation. But, yeah, for now, I think definitely having someone from the housing authority is a great idea.
Okay. And Lynn, maybe, well, not maybe, if you can send around Art's presentation, please?
Okay, yep.
Everybody.
Clearly, if there's anybody who'd like either more depth or explanation, please feel free to contact me.
Krista, did I cut you off or you, you all set?
Nope, that was everything I had to report.
Great, thank you. Lynn, do we have any administrative action issues?
We have none tonight.
Okay, great. Okay, approval of the minutes, January twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-one, regular meeting. Any issues? Oh. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Don't move.
Okay, Claire, do I have a second? Cat, okay. John Goodwin, I vote yes. Jean Grislecki?
Yes.
John Cris?
Yes.
Dan Radman?
Yes.
Clarissa Scornia?
Yes, sorry.
Ken Turner?
Yes.
Dick Ward?
Yes.
Bill Williams?
Yes.
Krista Nielsen?
Yes.
Okay, motion to adjourn.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, everybody have a wonderful night. Stay safe.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Thank you.